Hi, welcome everybody to this afternoon. Today is Tuesday, October 24th and it is 4:00 PM. We are convening at the Proseody School Board of Education. We are meeting at 280 West, 940 North in Provo, Utah. And we will begin with a roll call. Jennifer Partridge, Vice President.
Melanie Hall, Board Member.
Gina Hills, Board Member.
Max Joyner, Student Member.
Will White, Student Member.
Terry McFay, Board Member.
Derek Anderson, Business Administrator.
Wendy Dowst, Superintendent.
And we have joining us through Zoom Rebecca Nielsen.
Hi Rebecca Nielsen, Board President via Zoom.
Great, glad you could all join us. Do we have a motion to start our study session?
Hi, this is, uh, start our study session.
Okay, thank you. Motion made by Board Member Hall is their second.
All second.
Okay, second by Board Member Hill. All in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any votes? Good, okay. We are now in a study session. And we are going to begin with, um, turning it over to Wendy for talking about the inclement weather.
So just wanted, we wanted to try to create a more predictable way in which we're handling like snow days or emergencies so that parents and families and employees are not always wondering, you know, are we going to be in school or is it going to be a remote day? What's going to happen? So Derek and I met and kind of hashed out some protocols to create a more systemic way in which we handle emergencies. And so this is, this is very specific to snow days, but we could use it for, um, a variety of different emergency situations. But the idea would be that if we know that, that there's bad weather coming, then we would try to notify principals by noon of the day prior with the idea that there's a possibility for a two-hour late start or a possibility of an at-home learning day the following school day. And then we would make sure that our kindergarten, first and second grade students would be given a packet of learning materials that they could then take home. So the idea is that we would work with principals to make sure that they're telling teachers to have that ready, kind of a standalone type of lesson, set of lessons that they could send home. And then for grades three through 12, a standalone module that they could use online as we provide Chromebooks for those students. And then teachers would be taking home their devices as well so that they could assist students remotely if we needed to. And then putting 7:00 PM as our formal announcement of yes, we're going to go ahead with a two-hour late start for the next day. So all parents would know that, that school will be held, but it would be at that, at that two-hour later time. And it would also reduce, we're hoping, the need for a below-bench pickup because that tends to be a situation that creates a lot of frustration for our community. And then if for some reason there's so much snowfall by the next morning and we need to move it towards a complete remote day, then we would make that call by 5:30 AM and just shift it from the late start to a remote learning day. And we recognize that sometimes this is going to happen and there's not going to be a lot of snow and we're going to have a two-hour late start and we'd be like, wow, they totally did not predict that right. Or it's going to be a blizzard up in Davis County or something and not down here. But we're also recognizing that a lot of our employees come from a variety of locations. And bringing our students in on time and then not having the employees there to support them doesn't really lead to high-quality learning either. So it would allow our employees to make sure that they can get to school and we're hoping that it would actually create a better learning environment as a result. So we just wanted to get this in front of you to get feedback. It's just, I mean, it doesn't need board approval. We just wanted to be really transparent about it and, and any questions that you had or things that we haven't thought of, um, that we could add to it or take away. And then we would also roll this out to principals and get their feedback on as well, so.
What point is the very first bus start picking up?
Oh, that's a great question.
It's early, it's like in sixes.
Yeah.
Because I remember when I was in high school in Purdue, I got on the bus at like 6:30 in the morning for arrivals.
My kids are the first on their bus and it's 6:55.
By the time we got to the school, no one was there because the boiler had broken and no one bothered to tell our bus driver. So we were the only bus that, alright, and he says, get back on the bus, they're taking it home.
Yeah, so that, and that's also why we would want that 5:30 AM call time because we, we know that there might be kids that are already getting ready to go out to the bus and we don't want families leaving their children. You know, if there's a kid that gets on the bus and gets themselves out to the bus stop on their own and things like that, so.
And the thing with the low bench pickup, it's one of the things that we currently deal with right now is if we call low bench pickup in the morning, there are times where parents have left for work and then a kid is just standing out and no bus picks them up. And that's a lot of times where the complaints we have, which is a parent, a parent calls in because their kid was essentially just stranded on the side of her waiting for a bus that never came.
Yeah. So I like this, I read through it last night and was, I, I like that. So this is great. And I'm sure you guys have already done this, but what is the feedback from, I mean, I hear about this stuff, I don't, I'm not in the middle of it, so for the people who are in the middle of it, what is the feedback? Have we shown this to them or is it coming to us first?
It's coming to you first.
When you say the people in the middle of it.
So transportation.
So this was, this was all discussed with my department, transportation, I made this before I brought it forward.
Okay, okay. And they, they feel pretty good about this?
This was, this was at their recommendations. We discussed it in one of my department meetings, which was, alright, we're approaching the new winter, this is how we've handled it and none of us have really enjoyed it. We've all complained about it the last few years that I've been here. Is there a different approach that we think is better? To which then they gave the feedback that this is the approach that kind of was taken about 10 years ago, that they all felt that the community had really embraced and that it mitigated a lot of those complaints. And they felt like from their standpoint too, from operations, that it gave them also the heads-up of to know what to plan for.
No, I like it. I'm sure that, as Wendy said, we're going to have days when there's like a skip of snow and then people are going to be mad that we called that day. I don't, my guess is there's nothing we can do to make everybody happy all the time, but I like that this is a process that's in place that can help. We don't, we don't live in a bugging area, but I like, I like it.
I feel like the two-hour late start is a, is a fairly good compromise. Try to give us just a little bit more time to be able to make a decision at that point rather than calling it and saying, no, we're not going to have school and then turns out we totally could have, so.
Yeah, no, I think that's good.
I was going to echo exactly what she said, like, we're never going to make anybody happy enough, like, it's quite hopeless. None of the matter what you just do. So I think it's good to have this process, it's like to have specific times for the parents or where.
I had a little bit of a concern with like the, um, as far as the curriculum goes, like how teachers are going to be like handling, like creating the packets, like are they always going to have those on hand and like know what to put on those, like ahead of time? Or like is it, it's just going to be like, it's like, oh, you gotta get these out now or they only have a few hours to do that?
So they should already, so it should be kind of like an emergency sub-lesson which teachers should have is where they would already have it in place and it's a standalone kind of module that they could send home. So it might be something that seems a little bit out of sequence of what's, of what's happening for the elementary students, but it would still be tied to the standards. So that would be the expectation.
How, so final decision made by 5:30, how quickly is that getting out to people?
Get out within five minutes, like, like, we're, we'll be talking from 4:30 until 5:15 or whatever, yeah. So I mean, we'll, we'll have already had those conversations. It's just, if there happens to be snow that comes overnight, then Derek and I have talked about, we'll use some of our cabinet people to go to different parts of the district and identify, you know, is it, can we actually travel across the district? Is this safe? Are employees going to be able to get in and what, what is that going to look like? So it, it's just 5:30 is the latest it's going to go out, so it'll probably be earlier than that.
Alright, there's definitely been times where I've been like with swim where I've just been like refreshing my phone.
Oh, fair point.
Just like, please, please, please.
Because it's at 5:50 they can go to swim, right?
Like, if it's not, in the next five minutes I have to get up.
That's my.
Yeah. I'm still waiting, it's still raining, it's snowing. Yeah, that's right.
So one of my concerns that came up last year when I was doing crossing guard is that our supervisors had no clue because she didn't have any kids in our school district. So making sure like.
That's a great.
All the other people may know that it's either a late start day or a no-school day or everybody that helps the school district function, making sure everybody knows.
And I just had one with the, um, last year, uh, one day we did this telephone call. They were kid or miss, like sometimes I hope they won't get one and I wouldn't get one.
I got all of our phones gone.
So I just want to make sure that it's all up and running.
Before the first snowfall, right? Like maybe some kind of a test, like we're going to roll this out. If you don't get a call, will you, you know, and you want to be someone who hears this information.
That's a great idea, I love that idea.
Let us know this because, yeah, that, that is a similar issue we've had at our home with who, who does or doesn't get that phone call.
Or if I do get it, it's usually like four to five minutes later. It was weird.
Yeah, just a quick question.
So I've got a question. Did we fit in any of the plans, just how we could coordinate the city, knowing what the conditions are on roads and things like that?
We will do that.
That was something that we've talked about.
That was something that he talked about.
That was something that we've talked about doing with the city is getting the roads department to give us essentially kind of section out of the, the city by quadrants so they can report on quadrants based off of what it is they're seeing as they're plowing.
If they're already out there, why?
We don't need cameras to get out, so that would be great.
Another question. With days where it's like kind of snowy, but we still do school, there have been problems with, I know, and this is a very swim niche issue, but a lot of us do drive ourselves from the rec center. And I know lots of people who have been marked as tardy or absent because they cannot safely go from the rec center to Tempe View and already it is a tight turnaround to shower, get ready, and get there by 7:30 from seven. So how might we deal with that?
Well, I know how I dealt with it as a principal, which was, it's a snowy day, so please don't mark anybody tardy, but, um, because that would just be the kind of compassionate thing to do. But I can talk with Assistant Superintendent Jensen and make sure that that is communicated to principals. I, I mean, I think.
I think they already kind of do that.
I think they try to do that. I think, I think in that case, if you're really dealing with an issue that way, you should just talk to an assistant principal or a principal to get that resolved. I think, I think if you just.
The swim coach can also work that, right? That all depends.
Yeah, some coaches will do that.
Are there any other questions or concerns you want to share with us?
So, so my right in understanding, the main change in this from the way things have been going is that 7:00 PM the day before time. So like as a parent, what I'm trying to track is, did I hear something last night at seven or did that email go to a junk? You know what I mean? Like, I guess I would just want to make sure this is communicated well in advance, in repeated ways so that parents like me who, for some reason, sometimes miss messages, have the best possible chance of hearing this.
Yeah, we would put it on social media.
Know what to expect also. Because we have had times where we wait for the bus and there are lots of, like, we would wait with a lot of other parents and the bus wouldn't come. And so many of us had missed the understanding that it was a below-bench pickup, not just one. Right? And so there, there is a bit of just sort of, if we can get in front of it and, and like I said, throw out a practice run of this and then just try to at least as much as possible, um, let people know. Because that is tricky and especially if you're leaving for work and your kids get themselves to a bus stop. I just want to, as many hits as possible to get this information out ahead of time. Because I know we used to set our alarm for 5:40 just to check to see are we getting kids up or not, right? So if we know the times, we can help. And I would love to hear, I'm glad this is going to go out to teachers and for feedback and other principals, yeah, because I think they'll know. How much work is that packet of K2 information? Do they have supports for that? Is it, do they already have it? If they don't, do you know what I mean? How do we help make sure that that's a reasonable ask of our teachers?
Okay. Any other feedback or questions for Wendy? Okay, great. We're going to move on to item number five. And we've titled that the second board meeting of the month changes. As board leadership and in our agenda needs planning meeting with Wendy and Derek, we were just talking about our agenda. And once again, we needed to add a business meeting to the second, um, Tuesday of the month meeting, the last Tuesday of the month. And so we just thought, well, we should kind of talk together and just make sure we're all on the same page because by tradition, we've been doing things like this and we just are feeling a need that that tradition needs to not be a tradition anymore. We have a lot of business, we're so busy taking care of so many wonderful things that it seems we need to have a business meeting every time that we meet, both our second Tuesday and our fourth Tuesday of the month. So you can expect to see that, that we're doing that. And then also, especially with our strategic plan happening right now and the time that we need to take on working on that, our second Tuesdays of the month, our last Tuesdays of the month, I should say, that meeting, we previously said we want to go from four to 5:30 at the latest pace. We're probably going to have to go longer than that for the next little while so that we can take care of both the strategic plan and all the other business that we need to do. And then the last part of that, and then I'll open up questions or comments, we talked about because of all of that we're needing to do right now, we originally only had one board meeting scheduled for November because of Thanksgiving, but we would like to add one on November 28th, the last Tuesday of the month. Wendy and Derek, is there anything you want to add before we open up questions or comments?
No, just, we had just talked about like just being consistent, like we feel like if we're doing it last minute, that doesn't feel like we're being as consistent as we just say, that's just.
And we want to be very open, not only with our whole board, but with the public as well. Because I feel that we do have some people that are watching us consistently and know what to expect and we want them to know we're not trying to hide anything, we just need to add, so from here on out, expect to see business items at both meetings, so.
So is it going to be like a full business meeting we go to finish professional development center or are we just going to keep on keeping it here for that second one?
That is a great question. We haven't talked about that. For now, we're just kind of doing it the more informal way that we have done on that subject for the last one.
We wouldn't have, we wouldn't have public, do we need to have public input if we're going to have a business meeting?
I think so, yeah.
Yes.
Bonnie's saying no.
I don't think we do.
I don't think you need to.
I don't think we do. We may not need to.
Should we look at doing it?
Let's look into it.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like if we're doing a business meeting, it's appropriate to have public comment.
What we are trying to do is keep the last Tuesday of the month business, I don't know, the bigger stuff if we can on the main meeting, right? That does have the public comment that is.
The confetti.
Right, all of that, exactly.
On the first and the second meeting just extra.
But there's some things that can't wait that whole other month before we approve it and so those would be the ones. The ones that can wait, we're trying to wait and do those on our bigger meetings. We will double-check the rule about, um, public comment, but I don't think we have.
We don't ever have to, with my understanding.
That's my understanding as well.
That we don't ever have to?
That's not, I don't.
But whether we have to, I guess the question is, should we? And personally, I don't, I, I think that if it's a business meeting, it's a good idea to have, there be space for public comment. Should there be people who have something to say that's impactful for what we're voting on?
Okay. So let's, let's look at how could, yeah, again, because we've kind of just thrown them on there, we're like, oh, we'll just stay in our study session room for a business meeting. So we need to look at how we want to adjust that.
I'll gladly reach out to our attorney who, who's very intimately involved in this, but I'm, I'm pretty sure that if you have a business item that the board votes on, that we have to provide a space for public to give comment. It doesn't have to be attached to the item. Some districts will say, here's the specific item we're voting on, is there anything the public has commented on? And it can be just to that one item. And that's how some districts handle it. Others create a section that just says, we're going to enter our business section where we vote on these items, is there any public comment on any of this? But I will gladly get that confirmed.
The, the city council does, they have a public comment section and then during the business meeting, you can comment on each individual item.
I don't get that.
That's why their meetings go so many.
That's not exact, but they can have, anyway.
Yes, Jane.
So are we looking at both meetings being basically four to eights? Because that's what it sounds like to me happening. And if so, can I get a pay raise?
Right. Um, I am still hopeful we can keep our last meeting of the month shorter than the first meeting. But some of it depends, like today and then the beginning one in November, we have two hours set aside in our meeting just on the strategic plan. So it's how much can we put off other business till later meeting versus what do we need to take care of?
So probably at least until the strategic plan is done, we need to plan on those things.
At least, but the parts where they need more of our time, I would say, Wendy, what do you need?
Mm-hmm.
But maybe like seven instead of eight in the last one? Okay, we'll try to, also be posted as we plan the agendas, what it's looking like.
I very much appreciated the text. I don't know if I can keep track of what time it's supposed to be here, so thank you for sending out the text and letting us know. That helps me.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay. We will move on to item number six. Over to Derek for a large purchase request.
Uh, yes, so what we have before you is, um, the request or ask to be able to purchase a wheelchair accessible van. We have a, um, an individual in our district that has the need of one of these and the one that we currently have is broken down and it's requiring our individuals, our employees to lift this person into a van. And that is going to cause a whole, there's a slew of issues potentially if, you know, somebody gets injured doing that. And so what this is, is a request, right now we don't have, um, we're waiting on getting quotes back and we're going through that process, but we don't really have them yet. And so what, that is why it's asking that we, the board approve up to that amount and then we can report back as to the final cost of it. But you're giving us essentially the authority to go up to that amount.
So does the van need, are we buying it fully equipped or does it need to be retro footage, wheelchair accessible stuff?
And that's, we're looking at getting one that is fully equipped, that is meant for that.
And that's for an East Bay post-high school student. And so that's why we're not using a regular special education bus because it's during the school day when they're going out to job sites and they're going to many different locations. And we don't have a bus driver that's driving them, it's just an employee that's driving the van. So that's why we have the need for the van.
The specific class, yeah.
Yeah, we don't want to consume and take up a whole bus with it.
Is it best practice to have one of these available even if we don't have a student?
I would agree with that statement.
I'm just wondering. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Because you never know when some of these are going to be.
No, we need it.
And this will be available like to all schools, not just East Bay post-high?
Oh, yeah, anybody in the district that would need to use this would have it available.
Just ask if there are other questions or comments?
Do you estimate the cost actually being?
Oh, yeah. They're not cheap.
Fifty, fifty, I saw fifty to ninety is what you were saying.
Yeah, yeah, fifty, ninety is what I estimate.
Up to ninety.
Wide range.
Yeah.
It depends on.
I guess I thought, no, he didn't say fifty. I thought fifty because fifty thousand is the threshold. Okay.
Most of, most of them that I've been seeing are, are sixty to eighty. So I'm adding it to ninety, just for a little fish.
New, used?
I've seen anywhere from new and used going in that range.
Derek, what budget?
This is not a capital.
Does the employee who's driving it need to have a special license?
No, that's the reason why we're looking at the vans we are because if we went with a yellow bus, then it would require that.
Anything else for Derek on that? Okay, we have the next large purchase request.
Alright, so what we have before you is, um, some additional curriculum material that is, um, seven through twelve. This is, um, expanding that, they ended up picking up the material on the last round and then as they, when they were going through it, they need to pick up this remaining seven through twelve trade-offs. And so that's what this is for, is I believe a hundred and twelve thousand and some change together. I have to go back and, and pull it up really quick. It's a hundred and twelve thousand, eighty-three dollars and seventeen cents.
It looks like the same vendor.
It is, it's the same vendor, that is correct.
So will you help me, I know you said it, but help me understand, so we approved something previously and explain to me what this is?
Same curriculum, so this is expanding it from seven to twelve. Because I believe what we purchased it right now is in just the elementaries.
Okay.
No, we voted for secondary.
Is it that voted for secondary?
Yeah.
Then we asked Amory and Gabe to help clarify.
So our initial purchase, the one that we approved previously was seven through twelve, but as we started ordering materials and getting things to teachers, we realized we needed an additional purchase to make sure that all teachers and students had the materials that they need. So our initial purchase just wasn't, wasn't covered by whatever that means.
So same company, same thing, we need more. What was the original price that we paid?
I didn't have to go back and pull it because it was the one that was looped in, I lumped it with all those different influences.
Yeah, yeah.
So I have to go back and pull it.
So how much is the total for this?
This is a hundred and twelve thousand, eighty-three dollars and seventeen cents.
From middle and the high school together or is that?
And remember that it's multiple languages.
Right, right.
And I'm assuming that it's working and that's why they want to expand it.
So it, they're excited about it and it's brand new. This was just approved in last month's board meeting, so the materials are just starting to come, teachers are just starting to access the digital platform. But they're excited about it and they're liking what they see, so we just need to make sure that all the teachers and students have the materials they need.
I have a question for you. So, well, um, so first, I have two questions. First of all, can you remind us, how long is curriculum good for? Like how many years are they going to use that before we buy something?
We get a five-year subscription.
Five years, okay. And then I've had students take world languages before, not DLI, just regular ones, where the teacher is still using the books that were on their shelf. What are we doing to help our teachers use this curriculum that we've provided?
So this was selected through the curriculum review cycle. So the world language committee spent a year really understanding the needs of world language teachers and students. And then they spent a year exploring all of the different curricula available and involved all of the world language teachers in choosing this particular curriculum. We just had PD today with secondary teachers, we met with the world language teachers and they're really excited to start receiving this. And I, I think the process that we went through and the excitement for this, I think it will be a different experience than maybe what you saw with that.
They were a part of that.
Exactly.
There's been a directive given by me that if we have adopted curricula, that they are to use it. So if we find out that a teacher is not using the district adopted curricula, then we need to know about it because that principal then needs to work with that teacher to get them back on track. So that, that's just part of state law that we have to be very transparent about what it is we're teaching in our classrooms and adopting district, state curriculum, district curricula is what helps us with that.
And that goes for like all curricula, like across the board, like?
Not every single class has district adopted.
Oh, okay.
So like your core areas, world languages, you're going to have some one-off classes like in CTE and stuff like that.
Right.
Sorry, one.
Were we not expecting this much excitement about it? I'm just trying to figure out why we didn't.
No, I don't think it's that we weren't expecting this much excitement. This particular purchase was complicated because the funding comes from different places. So we have some that are being purchased, which are teaching and learning. We've got DLI funds from the state, there's AP grant funds. So depending on what the course is, the funds come from a different place. And so really ironing all that out and figuring all of that out, what we realized is that
And so really ironing all that out and figuring all of that out, what we realized is that there's a bigger selection of teachers that need to be covered from teaching and learning funds.
Okay.
So that's why we're doing this.
Got it. And this is going to come from which budget?
Oh, just all the different ones. It'll be cobbled together again?
Curriculum budget.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I'm just looking, I have the two beside each other, the invoice that we voted at the end of, in August, business meeting and this one. And it's like in our, when we ordered the, for example, the Spanish, our quantity was like forty for a lot of the Spanish books. And now we're ordering an additional ninety-three of the Spanish one, fifty-seven of our Spanish two, sixty of our Spanish three. That's a big jump from forty. I'm just curious, like if you'll help me understand that.
Yeah, so part of the confusion with our initial request was, for example, in the middle schools, there are a lot of DLI programs in the middle schools. There are language courses that are not DLI in the middle schools that we hadn't accounted for.
Okay.
And so really it was, it was the issue of the funding streams coming from so many different places. And really until we started getting materials and identifying exactly what teacher matches which material, did we realize we really need to purchase for more teachers than we initially were?
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item number eight, open enrollment. And we'll come up over to Doug's pitch.
Hello, everybody. It's, this is our annual appointment with, with open enrollment. So every year at this time, we have the opportunity to look over some, some information that's really quite interesting. There's a lot here. There's probably stuff that might be interesting to your curiosity about classrooms and the capacity of each of our buildings and so forth. So essentially, just as a way of introduction to it, November fifteenth, we will open the portal. That's an annual portal under state code, first open schools for open enrollment. Open enrollment means that if we have room within a school and the capacity and the student's behavior and attendance are adequate, the student can come and apply for open enrollment to attend that school. And so we begin what we call the open enrollment period here in November. And that runs until the first Friday in February. That initial criteria as to whether we have room for people is based on the capacity of our buildings. So this report is all about facilities. And so I appreciate and thank Derek's team and the architects and those who helped support us getting these numbers. This is also something that you saw the former superintendent in about, Mayor June, published a report about his report on some of these capacities. That updated some of our numbers. I think you'll also find of interest that we're going through a transition with two of our buildings. Dixon Middle School is going to close next year. We're going to be at Shoreline Middle School. There are some transitions happening at Tiffew High School with wings that are opening and closing. So it was a little bit of a unique year that we had some building facilities that changed. Because unless we're adding to the facility by a reconstruction or an addition or bringing a trailer on, onboard, these numbers will stay pretty fixed, right? So you'll see over here on the left-hand column with the little initials by school, you'll see classrooms that are available as teaching stations. The next column though, has a section here that has some discretion that the principals put into play as to how many of those available classrooms that they need to utilize for other functions that might be necessary for a school. Maybe teaching a, a small group of students with IEPs. It might be a place where they need to do some, some workaround employer-student wellness. It could be they have an extra space and they want to store some furniture in a room. So in other words, they sometimes will set aside at their discretion some rooms to take off of the general availability teaching spaces. But once we've calculated those two numbers, we then just take it as to what our class size allotments are in the Pearl City Schools, elementary, middle school and high school. And then you see as you get over here to that, finding the room for open enrollment. Once we take away projected enrollment for next year, these are all the move-up numbers, right? That we anticipate from the students who are in each of the queues and we know where they're going to attend next year. We then have that column that's fourth to the end, excuse me, fourth to the end column that shows what we see as capacity of the buildings to take additional students next year based on our best projections at this point. So again, I think that those that have been on the board for a little while, know that we had this conversation last year. This was a, a real poignant conversation last year because we were looking at some things associated with the phase that we were in at Tiffew High School. We felt like we could have space for students to move in, also knowing there would be a burden on that campus as far as parking, other types of things around the hallways. I mean, you've been through all this, Will, you know how difficult and challenging this has been. The Board of Education last year at this time voted to close Tiffew High School for one year for open enrollment applications. So in other words, you had to attend in the attendance area. So you can see the impact over there on the last three columns. It had four open enrollment requests and those that were granted last year. Anticipating your questions today also included a three-year history down below of what happened at Tiffew as far as applications and approvals, both in and out of the school. And you can see the significant drop in the number of people who applied because they knew that the school was closed, as well as the number that we actually ended up approving. And that approval was given by this Board of Education's direction to say it has to be an extenuating circumstance. It's a family that would separate their siblings. Like say someone already was in Tiffew High School and then they moved and they wanted to attend Tiffew with their, with their sibling. Those were the couple of conditions that we looked at to give any exceptions as to why that number thirteen, I think it's there, right? Is that, is allowing some exceptions for that. So tonight, we come to you again as saying, we believe all of our numbers demonstrate that there's room in all of our schools to remain, for all schools to be open for open enrollment. That application portal will open on November fifteenth and run through February. On the backside of this, although we typically don't have a formal conversation about it, is that we go into what we call late open enrollment, which is then based on the FTE. In other words, that we, by that point, we've assigned the teacher staffing to each of the schools, right? We've actually even begun the hiring process in many cases. So at that point, we changed the status based on not the capacity of the building, but the capacity of their master schedule and their staffing, right? So then we go into the late enrollment period that then runs through the whole next school year. So this is just the data that I wanted to get in front of you tonight, give you a chance to ask any questions. Again, I think it's always curious, particularly I know this board is having a lot of conversations about their schools and about sizes and capacities, as well as what is the impact that each of those schools is experiencing as it relates to open enrollment choices in and out of their building, right? Because you can see that's provided for all eighteen of the traditional schools. So I'll pause there and see if there's any questions I can help you with. Again, right now, we're not recommending any action tonight as an executive cabinet because we see the numbers are playing themselves out to have space. If there was a space that we felt like was a concern, we would ask, of course, for you to consider voting to close that school. But our recommendation tonight is not necessarily to do that, but we certainly want to give you a chance to dialogue and ask questions of the, of the executive leadership team.
All right, we've got a question. Melanie?
My first question is if a student comes to Student Services or if they're at a specific school, who makes the final call that they're allowed to go to that school?
Yeah, there's a process that's an online application. We have a Qualtrics portal that they submit an application. That first initial look is that we just, we just will first identify if the school is closed or not. And in these cases, for all this open enrollment, it wouldn't be, right? But when we get into late enrollment, where we start looking at saying, does, let's say your school, they're Rock Canyon, does it have space for this student who's applying to be in the third grade? Are the class sizes such that they're ninety percent of the capacity of what that master schedule can hold? If they aren't, then we, again, from Student Services, we make notification to the individual that there's not room for that person to be able to be accepted on their, their open enrollment application. If there is room, and then from there, we will then ask for review of prior behavior and attendance records of those students who wanting to apply to that new school. So my office staff collects those records from the previous school or school district, reviews them to make sure they make a minimum standard that they were adequate, excuse me, in their attendance and their behavior was not causing an administrative burden on the school as far as managing. And then from there, we would then notify the school, you have capacity, the student has good grades and, not grades, excuse me, behavior and attendance, and therefore they'll be coming your direction to attend your school. We try and give the school at least a day or two's notice to be able to look at that applicant too. Because sometimes, they sometimes pick up on things that we don't find through our awareness of, of a situation that might cause a conflict at their school. Rarely that that occurs that we get like a red flag from a school, but then that's how they would then be accepted into the school for open enrollment.
Doug, can I, can I get some clarification? When you're talking about attendance, you cannot bar a student from entering a school if the student has excused absences from a parent. We are talking about a student who's truant.
Thank you. That's a great clarification. Thank you, Wendy. So we're not looking at someone who's like had a health concern.
Right.
And, and, and the parent excused absences. Thanks for that clarification. Should be, I should have been more specific, a truancy concern, right, associated with their attendance. The other things that are also coming to play is that each of the schools have certain capacity given to them, say, by our Department of Special Education, where they have a certain number of caseload volume that they can take on. So we have also a number we look at there saying, this school is already at its cap as far as the number of IEPs that they can support because of the allotment of teachers that can manage the IEP needs of those students. So that's another criteria that comes up occasionally. Thanks for that question. Any follow-up to that, Melanie?
The only other question I had was with regards to like Edgemont this year. We had to add a whole nother kindergarten class after the start date. Was that something because there were so many requests? Or was that, was there room for those kids if they would have stayed in their boundaries? I'm just checking.
Yeah, I think there's a couple of things that came to play with that one because I think we also have to take into account the idea that we started offering full-day kindergarten and that changed our bandwidth too, right? So you had to offer more sections when you have kids staying all day versus a teacher being able to offer two days. So that was probably a piece of the puzzle.
By the way, we went from three to four, right?
And when I was the principal there, it would fluctuate from year to year, whether I had four principal, four kindergartens or three kindergartens. The hardest number for us to project as move-ups are who's coming into kindergarten, right?
So I guess my question is of like, would we have just said, we're sorry, we're tapped, if these were people who were requesting to come in?
We would have, yeah. We would have, but we wouldn't for open enrollment because there's the capacity in the building to take students.
Even though we had to adjust and change things to find a, find a classroom for them.
Right.
So Melanie, there, there's a difference between what this is opening is up through February, right? So this is based on, these are our projected number of seats. Then based on the numbers that we have and the number of enrollments that we accept, then we set the FTE. The problem is, is that then if the school is full at that point, we would not accept an out-of-boundary student. The reason we have this issue at Edgemont is because we have students that were within the boundaries that you can't deny those students. So once we've accepted these other ones, then if there's more students that move in, then we may end up having to add a class.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks for that help, Wendy.
Gina?
I have all kinds of questions.
Oh, great.
So maybe I just need to go talk to Carrie about this. But Tempanogus has like a hundred and something less capacity than Dixon and that doesn't seem.
I know, I had that same question. Tempanogus.
And so when we, they built Dixon, they opened up, if I remember correctly, they opened up a trailer that same year and they only had about, I think around eight hundred, seven to eight hundred kids. So when I look on here and see that the capacity is eleven hundred, like, it doesn't seem right. Is that right? Or do I just need to go talk to Carrie?
No, I think this, the conversation starts again with Derek's team on saying that there are forty-five teaching stations. That's where that number starts from, right? Is, is how many teaching stations in the building? We need to go back and verify that using blueprints and so forth. It could be that a lot of those rooms aren't being used currently at that. But that building was built with forty-five teaching stations, so.
It's one of our smallest schools.
It is.
Like square footage ones. But that doesn't mean room-wise.
Right, necessarily. Yeah, so that's, that's a number we could look to review.
Yeah, because Tiffew says twenty-eight hundred on like, they have twenty hundred people. So I, I mean, I can go talk to Carrie. It's just concerning to me, like, and I don't think that what, three hundred and ninety kids are going to want to come into Tempanogus, so it's not a problem. But I, I just look at these and think, we shouldn't, we shouldn't be building elementary schools that are just smaller than our middle schools for a variety of reasons. But also, if we had to open a trailer the year that the school opened, when they, that the new built, then just something's wrong.
Are you concerned that Shoreline's not got enough space? There's three hundred and fifty seats still available there, right?
Tempanogus, Tempanogus.
No, I'm sorry. I'm talking about Tempanogus. Because if we have one school that fits the same amount of kids as middle schools, then all the kids should be going to the, you know, that we have too many schools to open. Does that make sense? So I don't know. I will, I'll talk to Derek's team and I will talk to Tempanogus about that. We have no questions about that. Are we opening Tempanogu, uh, Tempe this year?
Yeah, so again, in, in summary, we're not, we're not voting to close the school. So the, the position the board last year was to close it for one year. So this is the moment for you to decide. The, the executive council, cabinet is saying, these, these numbers are straightforward. It would take an extenuating circumstance for us to justify, as state code's written, if you've got capacity, you should be open. So we would have to have some sort of a, of a, of a clear reason why we would document, why we would choose to close a school that's demonstrating that they have capacity upwards of three hundred more student seats.
That's at twenty-eight hundred, right? Can Tempe fit?
That's at twenty-five thirty-nine, right? That's the ninety percent, right? Then the projection, now they're, they're going to be down eighty students next year. They happen to have a, a senior class that's much larger than the incoming freshman class. About, to the tune of about eighty to a hundred students.
And if you look at how many requests that they get, that's why Cabinet wasn't concerned about it. The number of requests that we're typically getting over the course of the years, we felt like that the facility could handle it.
So they got the twenty-one, twenty-two number, they beat up to what they were this year, basically.
So we have specific schools, Tempe's one of them, Lakey's another one, that we accept people on, which is fine. I'm not anti-open enrollment. But I do get concerned because we accept a lot of kids and it's bursting at the seams. And then what we hear from everyone is we need to build on. We need to add to the building. We need to do all these things. And again, not that I'm anti-that, but we have other, we have buildings with other capacities. So I think maybe this is for Doug, maybe this is for us as a board and a cabinet. How do we, how are we going to manage that? Because we have schools saying we need to add on to the building. That's millions and millions of dollars. And so we need to talk about this process because I'm still not really super comfortable with it.
I'm actually glad that you brought that up because we've had a good conversation about it in Cabinet today. So I think part of this is we don't have a definitive process. We're just going based on whatever an architect says or the number of classrooms. And we know that some classrooms are much more conducive to housing twenty-five to thirty to thirty-five students than others, particularly in buildings that are older, right? So our proposal is, is that we will start the process of taking someone from Derek's team, either Darrell or Jared, depending on if it's elementary or secondary, and then working with the principal and walking the building and actually identifying the spaces. Because, you know, we've converted classrooms into wellness rooms, though that's no longer a classroom. So we should not be counting that as part of our capacity, right? So there's just different pieces like that so that we can come back and say, we really feel like this isn't just based on what an architect is saying, we're taking that, but we're actually looking at what are the spaces and how are they occupied? And it's not just a phone call to a person who's kind of walking around. It's a committee of people that are using the same standards for every single building that we walk. So this will get fixed.
That will make, but for this coming year, we have to just fly by the seat of our pants?
A little bit.
And then we'll have it maybe next, following you.
I don't, I don't think it's very inactive.
Because these numbers, I mean, here's an example. If you've got thirty-six requests already for Centennial Middle School and thirty-nine spots, you know that you're actually going to close open enrollment when you hit that number for Centennial Middle School, for example. So, so I do think some auditing of these spaces is important. But also, we have a really clear, at least for now, tool to use to make sure we are not admitting more students than we can accommodate. And one.
Oh, gosh, no, please.
I was just going to say, one personal request as you're walking through and looking at spaces is to watch for things like support spaces. As an SLP who had a room closet twice as my workspace, it was really hard to do effective therapy in that space. The space itself undermined some of the therapeutic work we were trying to do. So just as you're looking, make sure we really are counting the right spaces for, for the right things as we get this number. But then once we do have this tool, this is a, this is a not, objective way to look at enrollment and make sure we're not over-enrolling into schools where we don't have the space to serve the needs of the students.
I can't remember.
Sorry.
Gina, any other questions?
That was my question. Thank you.
No, thank you. Those were excellent questions. And again.
Anybody else have questions or feedback?
Thank you. This is a viable thing that's going, that's been going for like fifteen years, this open enrollment thing. And some of your schools, particularly with targeted programs, I'll just say from having looked at numbers, thirty to forty percent of their enrollment is based on choice students. So when you talk about the impact this program has, this open enrollment program, it does change and makes it difficult to manage school sizes. There's no question about it.
Well, and we also want, this was what I was going to say. We also want to be a little more specific too, that there's a process that goes into place once that open enrollment period closes. Because once we have our staffing set, we may close a school, say for example, to third grade, but it's open to fifth grade. And so we would just want to be really transparent about that. Because what ends up happening is one family's kid gets rejected and this family's kid gets accepted and they feel like, well, it's because so-and-so knew this person. And it's like, no, it's actually because this grade level had to be closed because there wasn't, we didn't have the staffing for it, so.
And it can even happen at a secondary school too.
Yes, ninth grade, tenth grade.
They'll say, we just, we have a certain grade level that we just are overwhelmed with the numbers. We don't have room in the English classes and so forth. So they'll say, we're, we're closed for sophomores, for instance. Provo was that way at some point this year.
We just want to be really transparent about that process.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Mel.
Um, sorry, it came up. For Wasatch, is this the current building? These numbers obviously, right?
And I think we can look ahead to next year's, that, sorry, this is, we're in that building one more year. You're right, so.
Right, but for, yeah, that's true. I mean.
Yeah, so, so that will be the adjustment next year. So next year, Wasatch and probably Tempe will have adjusted capacities because the, the physical facility is changing so much over the next year.
And these numbers include portable.
I don't know.
Yes, they, they should, yeah. Yes, they, they should, yeah.
Is this Shoreline, the new Shoreline or is this Dixon?
This is the new Shoreline, yeah.
Because we'll be moving into it.
That's, that's what was reported by the facility staff. We tried to take into account the two new buildings and we'll take into account Wasatch and change this to Tempe the following year.
So we're talking about twenty four, twenty five, right? Because we're in.
The school year that starts in.
So one of the first things we do looking ahead to another year is this conversation. So, so thank you. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn our study session?
I move that we adjourn the study session.
Okay. Motion made by Board Member Hales and we are adjourned. And we are now going to begin our business meeting. We gotta say everything all over again, right? Can we take a short break for like, can I tell them I'm just gonna, I mean, do you want to or no? Do our business meeting and then take our short break.
Sure. Yes.
Okay. Okay, so welcome. Today is Tuesday, October twenty fourth, and it is four fifty one P M. We are meeting at the Provo City School Board of Education. We are meeting at two eighty West, nine forty North in Provo, Utah. And we will begin with a roll call. Jennifer Partridge, Board Vice President.
Melanie Hall, Board Member.
Gina Hales, Board Member.
Max Joyner, Student Member.
Lisa Boyce, Board Member.
Maggie Van Wagenen, Board Member.
Will Whitner, Student Member.
Terry McCabe, Board Member.
Derek Anderson, Business Administrator.
Wendy Dow, Superintendents. And we have Rebecca Nielsen, Board President, on Zoom with us. Okay. And we want to welcome Cabinet. There you go. Okay, great. Do we have a motion to convene our business meeting?
I move that we convene the business meeting.
Okay, motion made by Board Member Hales. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. Second by Board Member Boyce. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are now in our business meeting. And our first items on the agenda are, well, who was like, Wendy, would you like to explain?
Sure, I can explain this. We did not appropriately report out and give notice of the public meetings. So the business items from our last meeting, we need to re-vote on to ensure that we're doing this properly so that it was publicized the appropriate way and follows all of the laws regarding that. So agenda items four through ten are repeats of what occurred in the last business meeting, but we do need to formally vote on each one vote.
Okay, thank you. And by way of information, Board President Nielsen, because she's joining us from Zoom, anything that she votes on, we need to all do a roll call vote as per code or law or whatever. And to expedite the process, she has elected to abstain from voting on the ones that have already been voted on previously, but she will vote with us on the new item. Okay, so item number four, consideration to approve out of state student travel. Do, do we feel like we need to plan all these over again? We're good? Okay, we're good. We did it before. Those who are watching publicly can go back to our past meeting and learn all about it. So, okay, do we have a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the Provo High School competitive cheer trip to Anaheim, California in February twenty twenty four for the U S A national competition. And ratify any actions taken since the last board meeting.
Okay, motion made by Board Member Hall. Do we have a second? Okay, second by Board Member Hales. Do we have any discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor with aye?
Aye.
Any opposed with nay? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Okay, um, our next one, number five, consideration to approve out of state student travel or banned to California. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the Provo High band orchestra trip to San Francisco, California in April twenty twenty four and ratify any actions taken since the last board meeting.
Okay, motion made by Board Member Hales. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Board Member Boyce. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor with aye?
Aye.
Any opposed with nay? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, number six, consideration to approve the fee schedule adjustment. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the fee schedule adjustment for the A V art class to travel to New York City and ratify any actions taken since the last board meeting.
Okay, so motion made by Board Member Boyce. Do we have a second? A second, okay. Board Member Van Wagenen seconds that. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed with nay? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, number seven on our agenda, consideration to approve the Shoreline bus route. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the Shoreline bus routes as discussed in study session and ratify any actions taken since the last board meeting.
Okay, motion made by Board Member Van Wagenen. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Board Member Hales. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor with aye?
Aye.
Any opposed with nay? Motion passes unanimously. Number eight, consideration to approve large purchase request for the Wasatch fencing. Do we have a motion?
I think it might turn right. I move that we approve the large purchase request in the amount of one hundred and forty seven thousand, one hundred and eighty five dollars and eighty eight cents for fencing at Wasatch Elementary School and ratify any actions taken since the last board meeting.
Okay, motion made by Board Member McCabe. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Board Member Hall. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor with aye?
Aye.
Any opposed with nay? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, number nine, consideration to approve the T S F A plan. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the T S F A plan discussed in previous study sessions and ratify any actions taken since the last board meeting.
Okay, motion by Board Member Hall. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Board Member Hales. Any further discussion? All in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed with nay? Motion passes unanimously. All right, number ten, consideration to approve the L E A specific licenses. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the L E A specific licenses as discussed in our previous study session and ratify any actions taken since the last board meeting.
Okay, motion by Board Member Hales. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Board Member Boyce. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed with nay? Motion passes unanimously and keep the ayes. Good job. Woo. Okay, we got through all of those ones. Okay, now, number eleven, the large purchase request for the wheelchair. Derek, do you want to remind us of that?
Yep, so what you have before you, Gordon, is a, a request that we have a need for a wheelchair accessible van. This makes it to where the vehicle is equipped to get an individual who's in the wheelchair into the van and out of the van in a manner that is not, you know.
Uncomfortable.
Unsafe, thank you. That is what we're looking for and or are in terms of. And so right now, we're in the middle of looking for one and trying to get, get close. You know, there are used ones that are out there that we're working at, but again, the used ones are almost as expensive as the new ones, but with a hundred thousand miles or so. We're, you know, we're getting close and that's why we're asking for the amount to not exceed up to ninety thousand dollars in this van.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion?
I move that we purchase, approve the purchase of a wheelchair accessible van in the amount not to exceed ninety thousand dollars.
Okay, motion made by Board Member Van Wagenen. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Boyce. Do we have any discussion on the motion starting with Board Member Van Wagenen?
No, I think I will just say, I know I just came to the meeting late, but I was listening while I dropped off kids, so I did hear the discussion previously for all of these items.
I just have a clarified question that may need to be answered. Do we need to have two employees in the van at all times?
That I don't know. Something I would.
No, you do not. Because I know I'm usually on blessed special occasions and I get.
But they will, but they will because it's East Bay Coast High, so they will have, they will always have.
So we won't need to hire new people?
No. We will not. We already have, we already have the people in place.
We already have a van. It's just the lift is broken.
Okay.
And it's, the van is really old, tons of miles. And so it's to the point where, you know, the individuals who are using the van are having to manually lift the individual into the van.
And this is, this will support a motorized.
Correct.
Correct. Okay, before we take the vote, Rebecca was worried she might lose reception, so let's see. Rebecca, are you with us?
I'm still here.
Fantastic. Okay, we are going to go ahead and take a vote and we need to do it as a roll call vote. So Rebecca, we'll let you start.
Rebecca Nielsen, aye.
Jennifer Partridge, aye.
Melanie Hall, aye.
Gina Hales, aye.
Lisa Boyce, aye.
Meg Van Wagenen, aye.
Terry McCabe, aye.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, again, Derek, remind us of this large purchase request.
So this is additional curriculum materials for seventh through twelfth grade world language courses. Additional material was needed in order to provide all of this world language students access to the resources. And so this is an expansion of what the board previously approved on August twenty second, twenty twenty three.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion on this item?
I move that we approve the purchase of curriculum in the amount not to exceed one hundred twelve thousand, eighty three dollars and seventeen cents.
Okay, motion made by Board Member Boyce. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Board Member Hales. Do we have any discussion on the motion starting with Board Member Boyce? Anyone else? Okay, we're going to take a roll call vote and we're going to start with Rebecca.
Rebecca Nielsen, aye.
Jennifer Partridge, aye.
Melanie Hall, aye.
Gina Hales, aye.
Lisa Boyce, aye.
Meg Van Wagenen, aye.
Terry McCabe, aye.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously. That is it for the items on our business meeting. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn the board meeting.
Okay, motion by Board Member Hall and we are adjourned. Let us take a break until five ten and we will begin our study session at that time. Wow, you guys have a good time.
Yeah.
It was funny. It does look like there is a loss of public input. It looks like it just passed a small recent election.
I'm sure that I, I just say what I've been through in the past, right? So I'm worried about it.
I'm good, I'm good.
Thank you.
This is the hallway.
You okay?
Yeah.
Your ankle okay?
Yeah. My pride will hurt.
I was grateful.
I do that all the time with that foot. Lucky you. Okay, yeah. I'll figure out. See if I can get it with that phone. Yeah, you know, that's why I'm like, I don't know what seat is up front. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I, I just like.
So just to have that sound just along.
I did figure it.
Hey, guys.
Hey.
Um, I'm, I'm about to drive into an area where I'm going to probably lose reception for a good fifteen, twenty minutes. So if I leave, I promise to come back, so don't disconnect the Zoom and I'll do my best.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Great. Did you go anywhere?
Yeah, I went to the St. George.
Oh, good. It feels like there are decent.
I know. I'm talking to everyone, so I can get.
We never go to, we never go anywhere for that reason. Stay home and then we travel. Not in Harvard, probably not. She's taking it that way.
Yeah, I know.
How was New York? Did you go to New York City?
Yes, we went to Ruby Theater Group for like four days, five shows. It was really fun and really tiring.
Did all of you go?
No.
New York City's tiring period.
Just Ruby and I, yeah. We saw Six.
Oh, I love Six.
So good. And Juliet. Have you seen that?
No, I've heard such good things about it. I really want to see it.
Haiti's Town.
My brothers loved Haiti's Town.
Yes.
Did you like it?
It was great, yes. I, it was our last day though, so I was, the beginning, I was, I got a little head boggling just because I was so tired. We did two red eye fights. Thursday was red eye, Sunday night was red eye.
And you were here when we told, said that YouTube can hear you, right? Like, I don't think you care, but we're still broadcasting.
Oh, right now, yeah.
It's fine, but I just wanted to make sure.
Giving my.
If you're going to tell an embarrassing story, then it'll be on YouTube forever. Because I told embarrassing stories. I fell in the hallway and I came in here and so I dipped it in the hallway.
But she dipped gracefully.
It was like a slide.
It was like a little. Right at the end and shot like, I got it. Which I've seen before. Haiti's Town's great. I was walking all around New York. My teacher got her phone stolen in Times Square in New York this weekend. She put her phone into her bag as she was passing the street. She felt her bag tug and she looked and a woman had her hand in her bag. Made eye contact, took that phone and ran. She was like, my, my phone. And I'm so. No one even turns around and pours in New York City. She's never been to New York before. Bless her.
My brother had, my brother, my husband had his wallet stolen.
Yeah, just looked right at her, took her phone and ran. So sad.
That is sad. My, all my credit cards.
I had nothing stolen. Just read it right in.
That's good. I don't want to like.
Your trip was great. It was so. Yeah, it was Ruby's Theater Group. So funny. Put it in the hallway. Go in the hallway. We need new chairs. Derek's on it.
I don't know if it's broken or if it's a theater.
So fun.
What show did you see?
We saw Six, Ocean's Town and Juliet.
Was it good?
Yes, so fun. It's like all that's Martinis.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I didn't know what to expect and it was so.
Catherine wants to see it so bad.
That one was the most fun. It was just, anytime that's. That one was the most fun. It was just, anytime that song came on, they're just like. And the way they, so clever how they. So, yeah, I gotta get back. Love it.
Welcome, everybody, to our study session. Today is Tuesday, October 24th, and the time is 5:11 PM. We convene at the Provo City School Board of Education, meeting at Katie West, 9:40 North in Provo, Utah. And we will begin with a roll call. Jennifer Partridge, Board Vice President.
Melanie Hall, Board Member.
Gina Hales, Board Member.
Lisa Boyce, Board Member.
Meg Van Wagnen, Board Member.
Will Whitener, Student Member.
Terry McCain, Board Member.
Derek Anderson, Business Minister.
Wendy Dow, Superintendent. And we have joining us through Zoom, Board President Rebecca Nielsen. Are you there, Rebecca?
Actually, I'm here barely, but I'm here.
In and out reception, but she'll be with us. So, okay, wonderful. We want to welcome Aurora Laura with us. With our strategic plan, and all of our other guests and cabinet members here. Do we have a motion to convene our study session?
I move that we convene our study session.
Okay, motion made by Board Member Hale. Do we have a second?
One second.
By Board Member Van Wagnen. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, wonderful. We are convening now in our study session. And the purpose of this study session is to work on our strategic plan. We have Aurora Laura here with us, and we're going to just go ahead and turn it over to you.
Okay, great. We're going to put a slide deck up on the screen. Okay, yeah, be here in just a second. Okay, great. Well, thanks, everyone. I'm excited to be here today to work with you all on our first boardwork session. We'll do a couple of these over the course of the next six months, so that you are up to date with where we are, and able to give feedback several bases along the way. So that when we bring the final plan to you in the end, you will have seen and given feedback on many parts of it before it comes to you as a final draft. Today, we're going to work on core values, vision, and mission, because that's the foundation that we'll build the plan on. And. I think it's that one. I think so. They weren't that different, so, yeah, that one's it, because I mean, okay, great. Okay. So we're going to turn it over to Wendy for an introduction.
There you are. Welcome, everybody. This was my favorite slide last night. So I just think, last week, when we had our steering committee, there was a lot of really great energy that came from that. And just a lot of people wanted to even know what a strategic plan was. There were individuals that actually thought it was something that we created and then kind of put on a shelf. And I thought Rebecca and Lisa did a really great job of explaining that it is something that really will guide our decisions. So as we're trying to decide what to do with facilities, as we're trying to make decisions in terms of priorities of spending, in terms of how we want to educate our students, and it just becomes that guiding document. And so it was just, it was really fun to see the energy in the room, and how many different people were part of it, and felt vested in it, and felt honored to have been invited to have a voice in the process. And so, and then we got to review some of those plans, and we got to talk about what we did not like. We don't like acronyms. We don't like, we don't like a lot of education talk, and we want it to be very accessible to people. And we don't care about what the process was to get to the strategic plan, but we care about what it's going to do from here on out, and what that implementation looks like was pretty important to everybody. And then just really making it manageable, so that it really was something that people could digest, but then dive further and get, and get more information about. So I thought, I thought it was a great, a great first evening, and the energy was awesome. And so now, here we are. We're going to do core values and mission and vision, and this is the part I get really excited about. Here we go.
Okay, great.
So welcome, everyone.
Me too. So as we get started, I'd love to just have everyone go around the table, because I'm due to meeting you, and just state your name, how long you've been a board member in the school district, and one word or phrase to describe how you feel about the district's next strategic plan.
Yes, I am. I'm Jennifer Partridge. I'm in my fifth year on the board, and I'm super excited.
I'm Melanie Hall. I've been on the board for six years, and I would say encouraged. Gina Hales, I've been, this is my third year on the board, and hopeful.
All the words are con. I am new on the board, just since January, and I am really determined.
My name's Meg Van Wagnen. I've also been on board since January, and my word is curious. Curious what's going to unfold.
My name is Will Whitener, and a student member on the board since July, and I guess my word's just going to be excited.
I'm Terry McCain, and I've been on this board for three years, four years, maybe. I did owe everybody.
Ditto, is your word?
Yeah.
Remember the ditto. I love it.
Okay, is our, is our president with us? No. It's okay, she's not. Okay. All right. Did you all want to share a word, too? Why don't you introduce yourself?
Derek Anderson, Business Minister. Two years and almost six months. I would say that the word to describe my field on this would be, one, excited, but two, anxious, just, just a level of working complexity as a board.
Wendy Dow, Superintendent. I've been here for like five minutes, and, oh, since July. I would say I'm pumped. I'm super, I'm super stoked. It's going to be very exciting.
Nice. Awesome. Okay, next slide. So I'm just going to share a little bit about my company and myself, just because I'll be working with you all over the next several months. So I work, my name's Aurora Laura. I work for Insight Education Group, and we are a company that works with districts all around the country on different types of projects. Strategic plans are one of my favorite things that we do. And our company is made up of people who are practitioners, who've sat in the roles, many of the roles in school districts, so we understand this work deeply from our own experiences. I myself worked in education for 23 years before I went to Insight, and got my start as an elementary teacher, then became a middle school principal, founded an all-girls middle and high school, and ran the girls' school for, for three years, and then principal supervisor, assistant superintendent, chief of schools, deputy superintendent, and superintendent. So I've sat in all the different roles, and seen strategic planning for many different parts, and this is one of my favorite things to do at school districts. I'm excited to be here. The other thing I just want you to know about our process is we, we have a way that we do things, but we tailor it to meet the needs of districts, because we know every district has a very different context. And so we always check to make sure, like, how are we meeting the needs? You know, do we need them meetings in person? Do we need them virtual? Do we need, you know, how, how often do we need to do check-ins? Like, we want to make sure that we do this in a way that makes sense for your community, and that we build a product that really feels like it represents your community. And then just the last thing is we, you know, I think because of the work that we've done, we appreciate and understand that districts have very different challenges and opportunities, and, you know, politics and things like that. And so we want to just make sure that we are sensitive to that, and that's why we, we are very flexible with how we do this, and we just want to make sure that we do it right, so. So here's our framework for how we overall work on building a strategic plan with the district. One of the most important things for us to build in the beginning is to work with the board and superintendent to develop the core values or core beliefs, the vision and the mission. Those are the foundations on which we build the rest of the strategic plan. And what we're going to do today, I know you already have a district set of core values, vision, and mission, so we are going to look at those, but we're going to see whether we want to keep them, refresh them, or we're going to look at some examples from other places and talk about whether we want to sort of build something new and different. So we're going to kind of, we want to finalize, or get close to finalizing, kind of what those pieces will be, so we can get feedback from the steering committee, and then work on building the other pieces of the plan. After we solidify core values, vision, and mission, that's when we work with the steering committee and the district leadership team to then identify the district priorities, and then set goals and strategies, and the specific measures that we'll use along the way to see if we're successful. And in doing that, we do a couple of different things. We look at district data. We also conduct a big community survey that will go out, and so we'll look at the results of that. We'll share all this information with you as well. So you'll kind of see how we took community input to start to build the direction for this plan. So I want to just show you kind of the overall timeline that we're looking at right now. We started and had our first steering committee meeting last week, and this is a team that is made up of about 30 to 35 members, stakeholders from the community. And so we've got students, teachers, principals, classified staff, district leaders, parents, community members. We've got a wide variety of stakeholders that come together, and they'll come together once a month for six months to work on different pieces of the plan. And I'll show you on the next slide what we're going to do in those meetings. Starting in November and December, we'll work on doing a deeper data analysis and share that data with the steering committee. Not only just the district quantitative data, but we also then will have the stakeholder surveys done, and so we'll share the results of that to show what we are hearing from your stakeholders in terms of what they believe should be the most important priority for the district over the next three to five years. After we go through those pieces, we narrow it down to some priorities, and work with the steering committee and the district leadership team to then flesh those out and identify a few goals that go underneath, and the strategies and the KPIs, key performance indicators, which are the ways that we measure those. And as we're doing that, then we come back out to different groups and get feedback along the way, and then take that feedback to make revisions. So that's when we're going to do a lot of focus groups and take pieces out to the community, and we do a number of focus groups that are determined by your district. We typically do some with students, again, teachers, classified staff, principals, district leadership, parents, community members, just any groups that would like to come together. The district gives us a list, and we build a schedule and do a number of focus groups. Then we take all the data that we heard, report back to district leadership, the steering committee, and the board, so you'll see kind of what we heard and what changes we're making along the way based on the feedback we're getting. After we kind of work on those versions, we're going to tend it towards February, March, share a draft of what we've got so far with the board, with the steering committee, get any kind of final feedback, and then just work on revising again before we bring it to the board. Our hope is to bring that final plan to the board on April 16th, and that way you'll have enough time to do some planning, then to go ahead and implement it starting for July 1st. So these are the steering committee meetings that we do with that big team along the way. We did our first meeting last week, and that's where we looked, we did sample plan reviews. So we looked at plans from other school districts and identified, like, what are the pieces that would make sense for us to put in the Provo City plan? What are the things we don't like? Every community is really different, so we saw just widely different ones, just in terms of their approach, everything. And so it was great to hear what's really important to this community, and what they really liked. At our next meeting with them in a couple of weeks, we will talk with them about core values, vision, and mission, and our hope is that we develop draft core values, vision, and mission today, and then we're going to do some similar activities with them, and then get feedback on what you developed to just see if they have any thoughts or ideas that they want to share with the board in terms of maybe making some tweaks or revisions based on, you know, their different perspectives. We'll come back to the board with any feedback that we heard on that, just to see if we want to make any revisions before those are finalized. Then in our third meeting or our third month, that's when we do our district data review. We share the results of the survey, and that's when we start to narrow it down to what are the district priorities. And we tell districts that you should probably have between three and five, and those are kind of the big buckets of work that the goals are going to fit into. So typically, all the districts have something around academics. You might have something around HR, something around, you know, operations, something around wellness, I mean, just kind of the different categories. And once we've identified the categories, then we work on what are the goals that go underneath those, typically around meeting four. And then meeting five is when we then think about our strategies and the ways we'll measure our success, and meeting six is where we bring them some drafts of where we've kind of landed based on all the feedback, get final feedback from the steering committee before we bring it back to the board. So today, we're just going to talk about core values, vision, and mission, and what we'll do is kind of identify just sort of what those things are. We'll look at samples from other districts, and then look at what you've currently got, and identify whether we want to keep that, make any changes based on kind of the other things we've seen, or, or start over with some new ideas, because we have some new people on the board. So that's what we're going to get through today. Go ahead and go to the next slide. Just want to quickly explain before we go into each one. The core values for a district are the set of beliefs that drive all behaviors of the district. The vision describes what the district hopes to achieve or be in the future, and the mission articulates what is unique about who the district is, what the district does, and who the district serves. So the mission is typically a little bit longer than the vision. The vision is typically like a one sentence, where we're going in the future, and then the mission is, is a little bit more detail-oriented about how we're getting there. And we'll go into more details about each of these in the next section. So core values are the first thing that we're going to talk about. These are the set of beliefs that drive all the behaviors in the district. And so we kind of build those first before we work on the vision and mission, and you'll see in the pyramid, those are our foundational pieces upon which we build our strategic plan and the actions that we're going to take to achieve those goals. So, and I'm sorry, this will, we're about to get to the part where you start interacting, so we're all a little bit here. So what is a core value? Would someone like to read this for us?
I can.
Great, thank you.
A value is a way of being or belief that we hold most important. Living into our, living into our values means that we do more than profess our values. We practice them. We walk our talk. We are clear about what we believe and hold important, and we take care of that, take care that our intentions, words, thoughts, and behaviors align with those beliefs. Brené Brown.
Yeah, so this is one explanation of what a core value is. Go to the next slide. Another way to think about it is these are, the core values direct the behavior and decision-making of a, of an organization's employees. And so you can see in the little tree diagram, those are kind of the roots upon which the rest of the tree or organization is built. So really quickly, I'm going to show you some core values from other districts. Most districts usually have four to five. We're going to see one district that has six. And what, what we're going to do is kind of brainstorm what the words are that would describe the Provo City School District. What you're going to see on each of these is they've identified their words, but then they write a description of what that means for their district and why it's important. Today, we're just going to focus on the words themselves and try and come to some agreement on what those words should be in terms of the core values. So we're going to see several examples now. You don't need to read the descriptions. We're just going to look at the big, the big words on the screen. Okay, so we've got Guilford County, North Carolina. The core values that they selected were diversity, empathy, integrity, innovation, and equity. If you see any that you really like, you might want to jot them down, because we're going to do some brainstorming in a few minutes. Next slide. So Waki, Waki School District in Iowa wrote theirs a little bit different, because they wrote theirs in terms of short sentences, but their core values are developing people, equity, keeping students our priority, or students first, integrity, and joy. Next slide. Oh. Oh, oh, sorry. Sorry. So here's Washington DC. They chose six, and they put students first, equity, excellence, teamwork, courage, and joy. You'll see, we're starting to see some similar words that are kind of being repeated for some of the districts. Next slide. And the last one we have to share today, Alexandria City Public Schools in Virginia. They chose welcoming, equity-focused, empowering, innovative, and results-driven. So I'd love for you to take a moment and just kind of write down a few words that you liked, or that you think, other words that you can think of that might be good core values for Provo City, before I show you what the current ones are. Keep going. Oh, I'm having people just kind of jot down a couple notes about what words they liked, or, or could think of for Provo City.
I don't know. You two will be able to see us, but they'll be able to see the projection.
You two will be able to see us, but they'll be able to see the projection.
Now the light sensor's on and it's going. Does she see? She's probably got it though. She can, because I'm looking at mine on my.
Yeah, she's got it. She's pure.
She's driving her.
I'm sure she has it.
Is she driving? I think her husband's driving.
Did she mean I have access to it?
She said it's better if I'm right. Thank you.
Okay. I would love, did everyone get a chance to jot down at least a few that they liked? I'd love for us to go around the table and just have you share out some of the words that you really liked. On the next slide, I'm going to show you what the current ones are, so we'll see if we see any, any kind of overlap. But I would love to just go around and have everyone share some of, some of the words that really resonated that they think represent Provo City.
I love, well, I wrote a lot that I want to read on. Developing people, students first, excellence, teamwork.
I wrote innovation, students priority, results driven, welcoming, excellence.
Lot of his name. I put equitable. Be shocked if that's what I put.
Well, I will just add to that, like, I have DEI on here, like diversity, equity, inclusion. And we have our statement, but I'm wondering how much those would have been high tech.
Yeah, I know.
So I wrote safe, innovative, inclusive, high expectations.
I wrote community, empathy, student-centered, and empowering.
Empathy, joy, empowering, and results driven.
I wrote excellent.
A lot of work to reset accountability.
Creative.
I think the only one I added was courage.
Great. All right. Let's go ahead and go to the next slide. So these are the current ones for Provo City that I got from your website. So all decisions and actions in the Innovative Learning Initiative are taken through the following three lenses: equitable opportunities for students, support for teachers, consistency for families. These lenses incorporate the following five core values: equity, transparency, empowerment, support, consistency. I'll give you just a moment to kind of read through those definitions. And then we're going to just talk about, do we feel like these are the right core values to continue with? Or are there any others that kind of struck you, you know, stood out to you that we might want to sub in and take something out or do some just kind of combining? So let's take just a minute to kind of read through everything and reflect, and then we'll share out. I got them off the district website, so maybe we should.
But they are. We didn't have like clear ones for our whole district, but these are what the Innovative Learning Initiative designed as their department.
Got it. All right.
They're great. They're a good example.
Okay, so they're a good example. These might not be the, so we're going to develop ones for the whole district now. Thank you. Sorry about that. I look on the district website and holding.
It's why it seems that we need a district plan to work on desperately. Because if you can't find the right ones, then that might actually be a problem.
Yeah. Well, and not all districts have them. So in a lot of districts we work in, we're actually just building them from scratch. So, okay, so these are, yeah, from a department, so we might want to use some of them. We might want to come up with some different ones. But I'd love to just kind of open up the conversation. Will you go to the next slide for a minute? So we just want to share, based on the things we've seen today, you know, the samples, we saw the ones from that department, just what is compelling or not compelling about the things that we've seen. And I want us to see if we can narrow some down. We heard some similarities in many of your words, so we'll see if we can narrow some down to represent the values that are critical to Provo City School District. So why don't you go back to that slide just so we can see, see just those examples. But I'd just open it up to discussion right now and kind of brainstorm together about what the right values might be.
One thought I have, whatever the words are that we decide on, I really think that these should be really inspirational and aspirational. So those are two things I just think, like, like when, soon as she said courage, I was like, yeah! So like, something that makes you feel like that. Anyway, I just hope when we pick words here that we do, where the word itself means a lot, we don't need a ton of text to describe why it's important to people.
One thing that stood out to me when we looked at the ones that are currently on our site is the word support. When we were deciding what our focus would be when we recently hired our superintendent, we had talked about, and with community feedback and everything, we landed on supporting students and supporting teachers, right? And so I think we've already kind of, and maybe we need a more aspirational word or inspirational word, right? But I do think that is a value, right? That we, we want to provide the proper support.
Kind of adulting people.
Seems like empowering could be a word that encapsulates some of that, right? Yeah, just the aspirational piece of providing support, right? You're helping individuals feel empowered to do what they can do with their lives.
That goes towards our teachers, our students, our families, our community around us. We want our schools to empower the whole system.
Yeah.
I think that takes courage.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts? Yeah, go ahead.
So some of these words for me, like transparency and consistency, even support, yeah, I feel like those are, instead of necessarily being the values that to guide district-wise, those are ways in which to follow through or ways to deliver the things we're trying to accomplish, right? Those are the means, a little bit, as opposed to actually starting point of the values, if that makes sense. Like when we're doing these things, we should be consistent, right? So I don't know how to.
Which is a good value for the department to have.
Yes.
They're the ones who are the biggest.
This is how they're delivering what they deliver.
We love these.
Yes. Yes. That's, it's how we should be delivering the things that we think are important, very much.
So I think those, integrity, I don't, and I struggle with the same thing, like, we should just have integrity, right? Do we have, do we have to say it, or should we say it, or I don't? But I think integrity, if you have integrity, then you're consistent, right? You're transparent. You're, you're doing a lot of these things anyway, but I can't decide if that's a good one.
That one I feel, yeah, it is kind of one that we'd have to maybe define more and is it already part of who we are and what we do in other ways? It doesn't need to be one of the four.
Yeah.
Right? I do think there needs, there has to be a word, like, something I love about Provo is that we have a lot of diversity in Provo. People don't recognize that, but we really do. And I love that one of our core values, we have all of these lived experiences in our district. So I, I hope one of our core values embodies either inclusive or whatever word we think is most aspirational there around the fact that we will be better when we embrace all of our differences and use them to enhance learning and teaching.
So if you could come up with that word for us, that would be great.
I, I always like excellence. It's something we should be striving for in the work we're doing, but it's also something we want our students to be striving for, right? We all should, at whatever level we're at, be doing it in the most excellent way we can, right?
I agree.
And that's how we achieve.
You know, when we had our individual meetings with Richard when we were hiring the superintendent, you know, Richard asked, what, what do you think Provo should be known for? And I'm like, yeah, it should be excellence. I, I felt like when I graduated from TCU, I was prepared to go to college. And I was able to graduate from college because I, you know, I was prepared. So excellence makes me think of preparing our students to graduate no matter what they're going to do after they graduate. To follow up with that, I just sit there and think, students are our number one priority. And when we graduate students, we need to be productive members of society. And how do we encompass that? Like, how do we get that? They're not all going to go to college, but how do they be productive once they're left their realm?
And some of that may actually show up in the vision and mission. That's where we actually see some of that. It could be in her too, but just know.
Yeah. And that's why I'm just wondering, can, we also talk a lot about, we're doing a lot of things with Domo now and doing things where we're trying to be more data-driven in what we're doing. And so I don't know if any of that are the missions and the other parts, so.
Implementation of the value.
Yeah.
How we get that.
I think while I'm thinking of around excellence and being mindful in ways that that doesn't limit, yeah, like, there are lots of ways to be excellent, right? I don't know if, some of our students may feel that excellent looks like perfectionism in a certain way, you know? I don't know. Those are the kind of things that come up for me when I hear that word.
I have the same thought and was going to say something, so I'm glad you brought that up because excellence should mean, if you want to be excellent working at McDonald's, fantastic, right? And so I think we just need to make sure however we frame, if we use excellence, however we frame it, that it's not like excellence means you get a, you're going to a four-year university. And so I think, and I don't want, I don't want kids to look at this, like, kind of like what Meg was alluding to and think they have to be perfect, right? This district is, you have to be perfect. And so I don't know how, it's your job, right? I don't know how we, how we frame it, but I do want to make sure that people don't see it and think that doesn't include me.
Yeah. I'm so sorry. Makes me think maybe I would add to one of my words is well-rounded. Maybe that is something to think about. Like, how do we help our students be well-rounded in the sense that they don't need to feel like they need to focus in on one?
And that's what I think several of us mentioned. I loved some of these that developing people.
Yeah.
They're not just about their academic excellence, right? We're helping them with lots of things. And as we've looked at, you know, state has a portrait of graduating, districts have one. It is about so many other things than just how well are they doing in math reading, as important as those are as well.
I love that TCU has three core values: growth, inclusion, and excellence. There's so many ways that you can use those to really encapsulate this. So, you know, growth is a word we can put in there because.
It's a bit of an ability.
Yes. Yeah. Right? Like, because all of us in, in any place where we're working at any given time should be thinking about growth and do we have the courage to do that? Can we, can I see what, someone gives me feedback? And I just think that is an important part of our culture as a district, I like.
I think that goes along with innovation, though.
Yes.
Because we, we don't want to be rigid, like, no, this is how we do everything, and we're not being willing to change if needed.
Will, do you have anything else?
I mean, just, all right, with the values, right, that's going to be not very actionable, right? It's kind of nebulous, but how do we make sure that everything we are doing isn't aligned with those values rather than, oh, yeah, well, growth is our value here and we'll keep the same policies we've had for the past five years, right? So how are we going to make sure that we're, that these are actually actionable values?
That's an ambition statement, I would guess. But that's good.
So I think we've come to more than five. Which is okay. And I don't know if we want to try and narrow it further. So the other piece, what usually happens in these work sessions is we get most of the way, and then we'll get some feedback and come back to you with some, you know, ideas. And so I don't know if we want to keep kind of narrowing, or if you'd like me to sort of take what we've discussed so far back to the steering committee and return with kind of their thoughts about your ideas of how we might word some. And some of what you said, like, in terms of, like, excellence could mean anything, that's where the districts typically use the definitions to, to help people understand, like, what it, what it means for that district. And so, because I hear a lot of districts have that same debate, and they want to make sure everyone feels included. And so what we can do is look at, like, some definitions for how other districts address, you know, address that through there. But I don't know, do we want to keep narrowing, or do, would you like me to kind of?
What do we narrow it to?
So I heard a lot of, kind of, people say empowerment and excellence, maybe something about diversity or being inclusive kind of things. Just kind of the well-rounded, we've got growth, innovation. I did hear students first and courage.
Because the steering committee is going to have some input into this too, right?
Yeah. Yeah. So you, you guys are the decision-makers on it, but we can get their thoughts on the ones that really stood out to them, that they really liked, and bring those ideas back to you so that, yeah, they're welcome, you're welcome to share feedback. Or you can just keep narrowing and we'll get their, their feedbacks.
There's some really smart people on there, maybe. They might have better ideas than us.
I would say out of all of those, like, when you listed, the one that I was like, I don't know that we needed is our core value. As wonderful as quality is, is the courage.
Okay.
Like, I feel like, and I'm like, that's my favorite. I think it goes with the empowerment, I think it goes with the innovation and the growth kind of thing. Part of being excellent, I don't know, I feel like it can be part of the other thing.
But I think it's a warrant that we can take to the steering committee.
Yeah.
We should.
All right. So why don't I take the shortened list? We're going back to the steering committee, I think, in two weeks. So I was just saying, and then we'll come back to you and share what they, what they said about it. We'll show them the same examples and those kind of things, get them to do some brainstorming, and then we'll show them the list that you've gotten, ask them to kind of narrow, help us narrow it, and, you know, or what similar words kind of mean the same thing that they, you know, if they've got another similar kind of synonym. So I think, and then we'll come back to you with their feedback and see kind of where we want to go in the next phase while you work on narrowing it down. Okay. Are we, we good with, with that core values piece right now and taking this forward? All right.
I'm just wondering if Derek and Wendy have anything to add to that? Or we are on the right track? Is there anything we're missing?
I was trying to think of a different way to say diversity. I don't know if there's, like, if it's valuing voice or, I don't know. Opportunity. Yeah, something like that. And then excellence, I want excellence for everybody, but there is a, like, all of the synonyms for excellence are like perfection and virtuous. And I don't, I like actually the word greatness better. We can, I don't know. Rigor, maybe rigor or, I don't know. There's a lot of, there's a lot of theory out there that says when you have excellence and equity both, as one goes up, the other goes down because excellence implies competition, implies that you're striving to push your, pull yourself above others. And equity is more about acknowledging that everybody has something to bring to the table. And so I don't know how to.
I kind of like the greatness.
I like greatness too.
So I don't, I mean, it's not like the best. And I love innovation, and I actually really do like integrity because if there should be a value that's guiding what we do, it should be, how are we, how are we acting when no one else is watching? What guides our decision-making process when it isn't just for recognition? You know, like, when it's, like, who is it, who we really are and what we're really about?
So I, I mean, I like the discussion. It's a great discussion. The one thing that, I mean, a lot of the things that we've been discussing, I've, you know, integrity slash honesty was my especially number one thing. The one that Meg threw out, I really like, right, the word that came to mind for me was multi-dimensional because the students and even employees should be multi-dimensional, especially in today's society where things are moving so fast. And, and by having that multi-dimensional viewpoint, it makes it toward, you're not pigeonholing, it actually makes it toward maybe somebody has, you know, other areas of expertise that, that people are unaware of, and maybe that we should be teaching after to some of our students too. Inclusiveness, I felt like is one that I've had, you know, throughout. And that's the hard part is, is the way I've thought is, is, you know, diversity, equity, inclusion. And to me, the big word there is that last word, is that if you're inclusive, it enhances and promotes all the others. And so.
Can I, I just?
Can I, I just, with what Wendy was saying about this sort of, we set up sometimes to say that as we promote excellence, we might push back against equity. I would love to be the district where that is not the case.
I agree.
Right, where we say, everyone, we're gonna do the work to give you these opportunities in an equitable way. We are gonna have high expectations, that you get to a depth of knowledge that you're capable of on IEPs and Title I schools. We have this high expectation, it's not excellence, it's maybe in the sense of winning. Implying, as my family likes to say, second place is first loser. I'm like, God, they're the worst! Right, like, not that kind of excellence, but the kind of excellence that goes with, we expect this of ourselves. We're gonna grow, we're gonna take feedback, we're gonna improve and change, and we expect it of you. We'll be here with clarity and tools, but I think we should be equitable in the way we hope for excellence, and encourage and celebrate excellence.
I think we do need to be mindful of the way that we're messaging that, because I agree.
Yeah.
But then, if I see excellence, I was the kid who ran myself into the ground because I was a perfectionist. I'm over that now, but I was a perfectionist. And I see excellence in excellence to me, and I get straight A's, I get 99, 95% on all my tests. And so I think it will be about messaging, but let's be honest, how many people are gonna look past the one word that we put up there? Five. So, and I don't disagree, I don't disagree with what either of you were saying. It will come down to messaging and how, what is, that we want, I actually do like greatness. That to me, you could be graded a lot of things. And it doesn't to me, then, in, you go, a blue, so when I hear excellence, I think of the blue ribbon, right? That's, that's what I think of, and so, I don't know.
Whatever the word is, I actually care that it's more the value that we, that we set as a tone, that we demand of ourselves, that we share with one another, and then that our whole district is also doing. And so, like, however we embody that value matters more than, I mean, the word matters, too. But I'm just saying, like, I would love us to kind of have that conversation about, how do we support this? And get this message out in a way that doesn't overwhelm and immediately set kids up to see themselves in an incredibly impossible race, or as failures, because they have to picture it one way.
Because they didn't get the blue ribbon.
Yeah, that's right. Do we, do we need something about, I don't know how to say this, like, people talk about growth mindset or vulnerability or flexibility, but I appreciated grit. We're willing to change as needed, because the concern that we have is that the plan needs to be flexible enough to accommodate that, that schools are gonna look different, or our students are gonna have different needs fighters from now. And so, if it becomes, you know, so rigid, and then we can't make adjustments based on that, and I don't know if that has to be part of our value, is that we're willing to take a look at things. Maybe it's reflective, maybe we're reflective, like, we're willing to look back at what we do and, and say, wow, that didn't work. We're willing to admit that and, and regroup and change course of action as needed. Not because we just want to do the next greatest thing, but, but, because you do need that consistency, too. But if you're really tied into those results, then you can adjust course as needed to achieve that level of greatness.
See, that going with the innovative and the growth, right? It's all kind of that same mindset, so yeah, how do you encapsulate that into one, one value, right? But we're growing because we're reflecting and we're changing. It doesn't necessarily mean we're on the same exact trajectory of growth, right? It's adjusting to what means to be best, so that we can achieve greatness.
Well, I, I do like the words and how they have them defined by what it means, because I believe a shared understanding is important. Because what may mean one thing to somebody as they read the word, may mean something completely dealt different. And then see how somebody going, you didn't, weren't transparent, or you weren't, you know, empowered, or whatever. And it creates a difference in just what that shared understanding is.
Okay, so I can gather the feedback from the steering committee. I'll also, based on the notes you have, I've had, I've worked with other districts that have kind of struggled with the same thing, and landed on some word, I'll bring the words that they kind of landed on that, that sort of sums up some of the conversations, just so you can see some additional examples, because, yeah, like, the excellence, I think they've struggled, you know, with the word success. Just trying to find the right thing, and I'll just show you where some other people landed on similar sentences.
I got stuck on it, too, so, you know, a synonym is greatness, we've done it like that.
Yeah, yeah.
And I, and I don't want to use words that are current educational, kind of trendy buzzwords in this, just because people definitely have, like, when, when my kids see growth mindset, there's like a slew of memes and jokes that come out, and they miss the actual thing they should be thinking about it, having that across my, so if we can just steer clear of some of this, for me, that would be the worst. Nothing against having a growth mindset.
If you heard a game song, too, that would be great. One is coming to mind, I don't know what it's.
Here comes the boom.
I'm in my head, I don't know, I'm gonna Google it right now.
Or has requested a four dollar.
All right, we'll assign that to the steering committee.
I've seen Here Comes the Boom, you gotta have a good, you know, entry song.
All right, let's go ahead and move on to the next section. So, the vision describes what the district hopes to achieve or be in the future. On the next slide. So, want to show you, we're gonna play a quick little game. So these are vision statements from companies, not school districts, but they're simple, they're to the point, and they show where, what the district wants to be in the future, what they want to do. So I want you to just take a moment, so look at what we've got on the screen, and see if you can guess what company has that as their vision.
I cheated already.
Oh, no, everyone cheated, okay, all right. Okay, well then we can go ahead and click through, so. Ice cream, Ben &amp; Jerry's.
You need to put a disclaimer, do not read this one.
I know, I should, I should have kept it out of the version.
We're liking the thing around there.
Yeah.
I found the song, it's Hall of Fame by The Script.
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, one of the things that I think is, is great about this is they're simple, and when you read them, like, you get a vision of who, who we're talking about, and maybe not for all of them, but probably for a lot, in terms of, we know who, what company this, this really describes and, you know, it just embodies. And so, that's kind of what we want to do, keep the, keep our vision statements simple and aspirational. So the next slide. Another way to approach it, and we don't have to go this way, but some companies define it in terms of a couple different ingredients. And we're gonna look at a sample, because this is a lot of words, but I'll, I'll show you kind of how that plays out on the next slide. But when they write their vision statement, they describe their output, or what they want their outcome to be, kind of at the very end. And they do it in just an inspiring way. Have a twist that kind of shows something that is unique about the district or the company, and how we're gonna get there. A quantification, which is basically how you'll know that it's, that you are being successful on that, although it doesn't have to be numeric, and we'll see that on the next slide. And just some kind of human connection, something that makes people conjure a specific mental image when they read their vision statement. All vision statements don't have to have this, but we wanted to show you an example. So as we're thinking about brainstorming for our vision statement, you might think, like, do we put anything that's kind of personal, or, you know, or a human connection in it, to make people feel like, it doesn't describe every district in America, it really describes Provo City. So let's go, the next one. So, here's just an example of how somebody used those ingredient, used those things to write their own. This is like a bakery company. Producing and selling locally sourced cakes and pies that are so delicious and satisfying that every customer who leaves our store does so with a smile. So, it's, you know, aspirational, tells kind of what they're, what they're doing, what the twist is, how they're gonna know if they actually achieved it. So it's just one example. Let's go ahead and look at, I do want to show you, what you've got is your current vision.
I almost said that one's way too long.
And what I have on the next slide is actually your mission, the district's current mission, because I actually think they might be flip-flopped and called. I think what you've got as your mission is actually your vision. So I'm gonna show you that on the next slide, but here's what your website says as your current vision. "We are committed to promoting and empower, promoting empowering and inclusive learning opportunities for all students that are enhanced by technology in order to best prepare our students for participation in a global and digital society. In order to do this effectively, we support and empower teachers in learning and implementing innovative instructional approaches, while providing support and consistency for students and families."
So I think this is for innovative learning.
This is also from...
Oh, okay, I guess then everything, everything I've got, okay, on the website.
That shows that we need help.
Oh, oh, there's a... Oh, okay, well, should we share this as well?
This one says, every student will conclude, well, I don't know, this is an aim statement, there is no actual vision. Is there a vision on that one?
So, yeah.
These parts were done differently, because the vision, key point, the vision, or the 2020 guiding principles, we have the committee working on the guiding principles. The 2020 committee from that made strategic imperatives, which are valued, right, to me, and then they're going based on those, and they're actually strategic. That was, it wasn't intentionally done in that order, but at least it has the kind of strategic planning work that it's been putting on for years.
Okay.
It's listed under board goals.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so they, what they said, so, there, the definition we're working from in 2017, the vision should be, what we, what we, what, what must we become in order to accomplish our fundamental mission and purpose? I think it's still probably simple, aspirational, and then, yeah, it says, they should communicate a compelling, attractive, realistic feature that describes what an organization will become, provides a sense of direction. So the, the definitions of what the vision is are the same. What they put here, though, or guided, what the board put here at this time, guiding principles, which to me, they're not really a vision statement, they're, they're actually filmed more like core values to me. Because they put excellence, partnerships, individual potential, advocacy, thinkers and learners, literacy, civic engagement, climate society, and they wrote a definition of what kind of each of those means for the district.
Now, what I have from the mission statement is, it says it is the mission of the Provo City School Board to partner with parents and community in order to cultivate highly effective learning environments where all students engage and learn. I don't know if you have that on the next.
So that's one thing, one question I have, because as we've kind of gone through this and talked about all of this, it seems like in the past boards have said, here's the board mission, goal, and vision, but in my estimation, it should be the boards and the districts, right? We shouldn't have been...
Right, correct. No, it should be Provo City School District.
Yeah, I think, and maybe, and I apologize if I keep getting a department, this is all I can find on the website, but, or at least what, whatever came up.
I think you moved forward with what you have here, because the conversation is gonna have to happen around how we start from, where we want to start from anyway, so I think you're great.
Yeah, yeah. Let's, let's go to the next slide, because what this department put as their mission, I actually think might be the vision. To develop a culture of meaningful innovation, to ensure that all students in Provo City School District are future-ready. That to me looks more like a vision statement. And so, I wanted to just share that as we start to think about, like, what might be some good elements to put in the vision statement. Yeah, I was gonna say...
Innovative learning is what's such a, that's kind of...
So, and, and this is where we could keep something like this, or enhance it, or build something completely different, but I wanted to put this here, because I think that one's actually more like a vision statement. We'll show, I'll show you a couple others from other districts. These are not all perfect, but we just wanted you to see some other examples, so let's, oh, did I, maybe did I leave it out? Oh, I must have left them, go, go back, I must have left... Okay, let me just share with you a couple, I must have accidentally deleted those. Probably not, I might have just accidentally deleted them out of it. Okay, well, let's, let's get that for now, let's get that for now, because they're deleted, not the version I have in front of me. But in thinking about what we want to accomplish for the future, let's have a discussion right now about, like, what do you like about that current one, what might be more aspirational? Let's do that. I am gonna just really quickly pull up my, another slide deck to get those examples that I'll share with you in just a minute. But why don't we start the conversation around what are, some of our ideas are for what the vision could be?
Well, I like even just if we were to talk about those key ingredients, like, the output, the, like, the, like, do we have a sense of what that is? You know, the output would be, like, well-prepared students, or students ready, ready to...
I like a well-rounded word.
Contribute in their, on their path, or, I don't, you know what I mean? Like, what, what's the vision we actually have of our students as they leave? Kind of shy of a really detailed portrait of a graduate, was a compelling way to summarize. What we hope happens for our students.
I think the phrase that's mainly being used is the college career and career readiness, right?
Life ready, college career and life.
Yeah, the future ready was a good word, actually.
Yeah, I like future ready, yeah.
I do like specifying more, though, what we mean, just so, as we were talking earlier, you know, some people are gonna assume, oh, but, you just want everyone to go to college, right? But if we're, we're a little more specific about college career and life, I think that just defines it a little bit.
I think for me, it will depend on which future ready, or the more detailed one will depend on how long the whole thing is.
The whole thing, that's true.
I really like this one, can we adopt this one?
Locally sourced students.
Probably shouldn't be selling.
Leaving every stakeholder with a, with a smile.
I liked in the mission one I was looking up just a second ago, about, talk about developing a culture.
I like that, too.
That, the culture.
Because I think it comes down to, this is who we are and what we do. Whatever we end up saying it is, that's our culture, that's gonna drive everything. Once we've talked about enough, and then helped our community and our, everyone in our schools understands, this is who we are and what we do, then they can live with integrity as they interact with people and make their decisions, right? Because they understand this is our culture in our district.
There's something I just wrote, it's not a real statement, but.
Creating an inclusive culture where students feel empowered to be, or empowered and prepared, or whatever, to be college career. Empowered for greatness, or I, however we want to do it.
College career, yeah.
Can you repeat that again? Creating an inclusive culture.
I said creating an inclusive culture where students feel empowered to greatness, or to be college career and life ready, or, but I don't love it, but it was just a start.
It's a good start, yeah.
Creating an inclusive environment where students feel empowered to achieve greatness.
I like it. And, and not just empowered, right, but also, like, given the tools they need, or, like, maybe that is empowered, but supported, or, I don't know.
Prepared.
Yeah, prepared.
One thing, I don't know how to quite fit this in, and it was one of my core value words, but, and maybe this is just my own personal thing, but I would love to incorporate community somehow. I feel like part of these, like, producing, or having these students come out of school, is they are part of a community outside themselves, wherever they land, you know, and I, I don't know if that fits here, but I do think, I'm thinking about a twist, like, we could lean into our city, is our school district boundaries, right? There, maybe that, there is some strength in that, and I don't, it'd be nice to incorporate that into this process, and I'm not sure how to do that, but, and I think that connects community to me, right? I think we still continue to talk about our neighborhood elementary schools, right? Whether or not is that really how things are playing out, because of open enrollment, but I think more and more, this day and age, we lose the importance of community. You know, this, this idea of individualism, and I don't think that's what we have been saying here, but I think that there's some relevance to that.
So where students feel connected to their communities?
Yeah, contributors.
And empowered, yeah, empowered to contribute, or empowered to, I don't know.
I've heard some districts have that same conversation, and what they kind of, at the end, you know, something about, well, at, at the very end, they would put something, and, you know, and who are, who make their, their community a better place, or just something like that at the end, you know, is, you know, they're prepared for greatness, and they make a difference, you know.
They contribute to the community.
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
Because it implies inclusion and community itself as a value, and it's collaborative.
Because it implies inclusion and community itself as a value and collaboration.
Right, it can be pulling a lot of these things, right? Because community doesn't mean saying.
And just so you know, typically when, when we do this with boards, we kind of get to a place where people brought a lot of ideas, something like this, and what typically happens next is I go back and we wordsmith some examples. And we come back, so I just want you to know.
No, I know. I'm not trying to create words that you actually use.
No, but, so I, that's why I'm writing down because I, what I will do is come back within the versions that, that, um, that we can build off of using what the ideas that you threw out, so, yeah.
It feels hard to throw things out and then be like, I have no idea.
Well, no, yeah, and it's hard to think on the spot, and that, that way, me and my team, we have time to go back and sit and brainstorm and come up with several good options, so I just want to put that out there. If we just kind of get the ideas out, we'll, we'll bring you back some.
So it sounds like what we are wanting, right, the vision that we're wanting, based on everything everybody's throwing out, is, is we want some kind of culture, right, that fosters student success and some, I'm not saying we should use these words, but I'm just trying to get a handle on it. That fosters some student success, however they, however they do that, in conjunction with the community? Is that what we're, is that kind of what we're looking at?
I mean, what if we even talked about like students, teachers, and families, right, like in our district, all feel connected.
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm asking.
To, I don't know, to community or to greatness or to, I don't know, I don't know how we could do that, but I do want to make sure we're talking about, of course, our student success, but acknowledging that for our district, what could make this the best district in the state would be if we were the district that really prioritized our teachers, our, our employees, and our students, and our neighbors, and our community, working together to, to create these great schools. I don't know, but, yeah.
Well, they're prepared for contributing to their community and life and their career and, right, when they leave. You know, what do we hope to achieve or be as a district? We want to be that district that creates that culture where they are empowered to be ready to contribute.
If you said like creating a connected community so that students are empowered to be college career.
I love it because part of why Provo's School District is so uniquely positioned, I think, for greatness is that we do have this community. We have, we have two universities right nearby. We have this new medical campus. We have Silicon Slopes. We have local grown businesses and farmer's market. We just have such a vibrant community that I love that idea that, that our schools are connected within this community right now to support.
Just hearing the discussion, it's, I mean, it's no different than what everybody said, just a different way of saying it, but Provo City School District will provide every child the opportunity to find their greatness in an inclusive environment so that every child is prepared for an ever-changing world.
I tell you focus on every.
Yeah.
I do too.
And it is true that like, things that our graduates right now are using as tools, five years ago, we didn't think of them, right? And that is only going to continue to happen, so I like the idea that we have the mindsets and the flexibility and all the things we've been talking about to be able to pivot and adapt and innovate as our students leave doing that, I think.
Wendy, did you have anything?
That's fine.
Yeah.
I can give these after, but I want to make sure I got the right wording on yours and the right wording on yours, whatever. Instead of fast, I think I've got like half of it, and then I think I'm missing like a phrase, but I'll, but just so we can start to then kind of build off of it, so. All right, any other things you want to throw out on vision before we kind of take it back, wordsmith some versions? And we can also give the steering committee feedback on helping us like kind of narrow, if we come up with quite a few, have them help to narrow the ones that they like best, that we'll bring back to you. All right, any, anything else you want to throw out on vision before we move to mission? All right, great, thank you. Let's go to the next part. Okay, so the mission is a little bit more detailed, and it articulates what is unique about who the district is, what the district does, and who it serves. So those are kind of the pieces that we're hoping to build into the mission statement, and typically this is longer, usually about two, two sentence, you know, two, two sentences that goes into more detail about how we are going to do our work to end up getting to the, the vision. If I can go to the next slide. So I'd love for us to just brainstorm for a few minutes so we can just get some ideas out there. What is unique about who we are, who we serve, and what we do? So why don't you take just a minute to kind of jot some notes yourself, and then we'll kind of throw out some ideas that we might weave into the mission, that'll be right. We'll share, as we get the computer, get our president back on the, on the line. Is it, is it charging now?
Is it this?
Yeah, yeah, it's working.
It still has a red exclamation mark. I bet. So I mean, it's charging. Shouldn't it have like a lightning bolt?
It should have.
This light's on, it's charging.
Chromebook user?
Why I want students on board. Can you pop it with my cat?
Speaking of love, I don't know.
The batteries won't last all night. It might have gone off because we turned the light off.
Oh, should we turn the lights back on then?
It might be, but I don't think so.
That was my first thought. She, to turn the lights off.
Well, should we go ahead and just share out what they're, what they're, I don't know how long it's going to take, but go ahead and just share out. So, let's go question by question, but let's throw out some ideas about what's unique about who the, who you are as a district.
How about that we are a small enough district that we can be more personal.
And responsive.
Yes, that's a, yeah.
The personal's good too, but responsive is.
We're a pretty welcoming place. I know it's one of Provo City's pillars, so I'm not trying to steal it thunder, but I do feel like Provo can be a pretty welcoming community and we focus on kind of being neighborly and family focused.
Caring and safe.
Yeah, I feel like that.
I think as we talk about diversity, it's really important that we talk, not just about racial diversity, but I think we're very diverse, and we have BYU up here on the hill, and we have a lot of professors who know exactly how to teach their kids, and then we have people who are new to the country, who are still learning, you know what I mean? So diversity is, is not for me about race only. We, we are very diverse and, and we have people who believe that one way, and we have a bunch of people who believe the exact opposite, but I think that can be a strength if we can figure out how to pull together, so I don't, I don't, I know we, did we say diverse? I don't know. Something I'm just going to put in there, this unique to Provo, we are culturally more around one religion. Not necessarily it has to be art, but I'm just saying that that, that's part of our culture.
I think also what Lisa said earlier, that we're in a, a community with two universities and small communities, and innovative businesses in our community as well. A lot of businesses start here.
And we have a program to get our students working with them.
Okay, but why don't we go ahead and just jump over to, and we can, we can go back and forth, but let's go ahead and start this second, and if you have anything, we'll see them now, you can throw them back in, but what's unique about who you serve?
I think some of that's what we already talked about, about the diversity of backgrounds.
We have a higher percentage to bring big lunch. We have those types of now to economic diversity.
Our students come with a variety of experiences, and those experiences, if utilized right, should be seen as assets that build their resilience and perseverance and ability to be successful. Sometimes we see them as negative factors or things that are deficits, and we should take those experiences, and we have a real opportunity to turn them into assets for our students.
A couple of things. One thing that I, we're thinking about under who we are that I think is, I don't know if it's unique, but I think it's awesome, is that we have a really, a really engaged community, like, we have people willing to serve, support, help, strengthen, engage with us as partners in our community, from businesses to just neighbors, that I think is awesome. Who we serve, I think we serve our, our students within the systems of their families and their neighborhoods and their communities, and I think, you know, as well as our, our employees, like, I want it to be that we, we're serving and mindful of how we serve and strengthen the people who work within this district as well, you know, our teachers and our learners, or I don't know how you would say that, but our whole, our whole system, I think, is who we serve and how we connect to our home and community is about that.
Yours, what you said is really aligned with kind of what I've written now, is who we are, you know, the work, you would use the word partner. And I know that's more of a business term, but that's one of the things that I think people often forget about is we technically are, and I put it here, we are your trusted partner.
Yeah.
Because parents do have the opportunity to homeschool, charter schools, private schools, but they are choosing to bring them here and helping them and putting it up, and hey, you are entrusted, we are your trusted partner.
All right, well, let's describe kind of what's unique about what you, what we do, but if we wanted to jump back to any of the others, let's go ahead and do.
Maybe, I'm sorry, maybe one thing, I don't know if it's super unique, but we do have two universities. One's not in our district, but we have universities that we partner with, and if we are strategic about that, and I think that is something to do with strength. Not just universities, too, we have career, what can we call them?
CTD.
CTD type of.
Yeah, they're. What I thought immediately about what I think is unique about our district is our focus on supporting the whole student. So we have more social workers than any other district, you know, for students, and our wellness rooms. We've done a lot of those kinds of things that, to recognize it's about taking care of every aspect of them, not just their academic. So that they can be more successful with academic portion too.
Any, any more ideas about any of them that might possibly be?
Something I like that we do that I just recently heard from someone about, they moved here from a neighboring community because they felt their children would find a safer space here, and I love that concept, that what we do is create safe spaces as we work as partners, and again, these are aspirational statements that we can all work to do better with, but I do think it's important that what we do is create safe spaces for people to work and learn together and for parents to feel confident with their children here as, as a partner in ways for their kids' wellness. And what we do needs to be, we teach and learn.
It says what we do that's different.
Okay, okay.
What's unique.
Okay, okay, we should teach better and learn more than anyone else.
That you can have equity and greatness.
Kind of to go along with Lisa though, I wonder if because of that safer space, we help our students navigate complex situations that may come up in their lives where they, where they have to really navigate and learn how to get along with people that think very differently from them, and recognizing how to work through that, and that they don't have to give up who they are as an individual and what they're, what they value, but we can help them to still move forward and be part of the community. Diversity probably allows for that in a greater way than maybe other communities do.
Someone the other day talking about visiting their students' classroom here in Provo, that curiosity seemed to be the way they navigated this. Like, tell us more about that, instead of like a drawback or a fear or a judgment, like, can you lean in and ask some questions and, and see that as not challenging, and, you know, I love that idea.
Another part is we have fantastic teachers, and that's not necessarily unique to this district, but we do have some really amazing people that you could not find anywhere else.
I hope they're listening right now. They just heard the students say that, and we say it, but that was awesome.
Well, and so we threw out a lot of different ideas, and what's great is we've kind of got some on the top of our mind. We won't put all of them, but as we start to write, this is where we'll start to weave in some of the things that make us unique so that people, when they read it, know this, this isn't just any district, this is a very special district. And so we want some of those elements to be woven into what we write for the mission statement. Go ahead and go to the next slide.
Theoretically.
Okay, yeah, so, so I messed up in that, the actual samples that we had were on, were on the mission, not on the vision. Okay, so these are not, uh, these are not necessarily like the best ones, but we just wanted to show you a couple that other districts came up with, or pieces of what they came up with. We ensure success by inspiring students and addressing barriers to learning. We develop scholars through world-class learning experiences to attain an exceptional knowledge base, critical and relevant skill sets, and the necessary dispositions for great success. Ensure that every school guarantees that students reach their full potential through rigorous and joyful learning experiences provided in a nurturing environment. So these are maybe just some pieces that they might have added something to. And we've got one more on the next slide, so let's go ahead and go on over. This is from Waqee. Waqee Community Schools is a rapidly growing and increasingly diverse school district. We believe every individual's unique background and culture enhances our schools. By focusing on the joy of learning and growth for everyone, we create a dynamic work environment for our staff while engaging our students, families, and community through innovative educational experiences. So this one probably addressed a little bit more of kind of the elements that we've talked about, although it is a little bit long. Let's go ahead and go over, I think we've got the district one again, now our next, on the next slide. So let's skip this one because I think this really was a vision for that department, but let's go to that department's, what they call the vision, the mission. All right, so we are committed to promoting, empowering, inclusive learning opportunities for all students that are enhanced by technology in order to best prepare our students for participation in a global and digital society. In order to do this effectively, we support and empower teachers in learning and implementing, implementing innovative instructional approaches while providing support and consistency for students and families. Okay, so this was just an example from a department. So I'd love for us to now just take a moment to brainstorm, like what are some of the things like that you liked about what you just saw or phrases that might be good to weave into the mission statement that we write? Yeah, why don't we take like a minute just to kind of, for you to look through and just think.
And you have us looking at all those samples you just.
Yeah, you can look at those samples or think about the words that we just brainstormed. Okay, let's go, I know you haven't had enough time to write something, but like let's go ahead and just throw out some ideas of some phrases or things that kind of resonated that we might want to weave into some draft missions that we bring back to you.
Yeah, go ahead. I actually really like our innovative learning, but I'm gonna jump to Waqee. I love how they talk about every individual's unique background and culture enhances our schools. I really like that. And then I like, I like, there's a lot I liked about that. And I talked about innovative work environment, like that's, I want people to want to, I want this to be a destination district for teachers who are supported and innovative and, you know, it's dynamic like it says, but while at the same time, while engaging our students, families, and the community through innovative educational experiences. Like I just, I think that Waqee's is great. And I also like our innovative department, our innovations department because it talks about inclusive and I really like preparing students for participation in a global market.
Global and digital society.
Society, there we go. And then I like the word support and power. So I just like it all.
But not too long.
I wasn't, I wasn't very helpful.
No, it is helpful that, I mean, this is what we do with everyone, you know, but it's helpful to know what you like, so we can kind of work with those.
I really like them mentioning opportunities in the innovative learning one as well as the, something about like it will implement, that's the goal, is that we are actively to make changes.
I like the word joy of learning. Yeah, I got that.
In the sample number one, the mission statement, I was the, addressing barriers to learning. One word that I had been hitting on was there was one that we guaranteed.
I do, insure and guarantee.
Yeah.
Someone's gonna sue us.
Business, I thought.
Yeah.
As much as we would love to guarantee that, this is a problem.
Yeah, especially because you were guaranteeing full potential.
Yeah.
Every single child guaranteed.
I like the word commitment. I think it's important to make your commitment and stick with your commitment and follow through it.
I don't know.
Do we have another computer we could put her on? She could use mine.
Don't mind that I can't do all of this and all.
How about mine?
Let me do this.
Can she FaceTime?
You just, yeah, put her on.
She could be on like real work FaceTime on my phone and, yeah, that might work.
But I'll send, should I send this in like to the board? We only have one.
Okay, so send it to Wendy, she'll put it on hers.
She might have been included on the email.
Okay, any other phrases that we might want to try and weave into some examples that we bring back?
Yeah, I feel other words that I haven't mentioned, nurturing.
Yeah, I was trying to think about safe, like we built safe spaces, but nurturing and that are.
And it answers your direct question, maybe. Purpose of your email session, but I would like to make sure that we do also include what we talked about a moment ago about what makes us unique. I don't think in any of these comes out. Focusing.
Yeah.
Well, folk, I don't phrase it the way I'm about to phrase it, but just, you know, focusing on the whole student. Supporting them.
I think that's part of that, that whole, you know, helping with their full potential and take care of kids.
And I do love that, I love the word partner that Derek was saying, like somehow, like I like the idea that in our mission statement, we acknowledge our partnership with parents and community members to help students.
Yeah.
Whatever the rest of those words are.
And like Waqee, talking about the students' family thank you.
Yeah.
But two cents.
All right, two cents.
That aren't educationese that have, you know, five.
Yeah. Any other thoughts?
I don't know who said curiosity earlier, like I keep thinking, you know, allowing the students to develop their curiosity. Yeah, one word that just has come up for me, I wish I would have thought of it earlier, but critical thinkers. I don't, but I don't, maybe that's just not part of this process.
Yeah, if we get to portrait of a graduate, that's.
That makes me think of as portrait graduate. And the second sample on that slide, number three, the last thing says, and the necessary dispositions for great success. I think that's what they're alluding to.
Right.
Right, is all of those, the whole student, right? So how do we want to phrase that? I don't know if dispositions is too.
Too like.
Someone said earlier, like sometimes the terminology gets too specific when people tune out, right? Then the hot, the hot terminology right now may not be in a couple of years, but.
But we will be developing a portrait of a graduate that's more tailored, and that's where actually critical, a lot of most districts have to put critical thinking. So when you kind of see it all together, you'll see sort of where it was. Although, I'll see if we can come up with a better wording to weave in that part.
Remind me in the process where that happens, because I feel like if we're gonna, to quote Utah Valley person, begin with the end in mind. I would hate to go all the way down this path and then do our portrait of a graduate, truthfully. I think if we have a clear, in terms of a vision, our vision is that portrait of a graduate and then what words represent how we're gonna do whatever it takes to get there. But that feels first to me, or at least close to first.
We typically do the portrait of a graduate, we, this, because this one usually takes like a full kind of two-hour chunk and then at the next one, typically we'll come back what now with the next draft and some, and some feedback with it, so we can work with the more and typically that's when we pull it and then do portrait of a graduate and then, and the next time we come back, then we're gonna bring you some drafts of priorities and goals. So that, so that will be coming through.
But our mission says how we get there. How do we get to that portrait of a graduate? But if we just have our portrait of a graduate, anyway, I just, hopefully then we can tweak our mission.
Yeah.
My April.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, yeah, so we, I think we're gonna bring that next time and we'll also gather the feedback from the steering committee about portrait of a graduate as well. Okay, any, any other just thoughts or ideas before we, we kind of wrap up this piece and I take all these ideas back to build some options?
I just, I mean, it's not any ideas, it's just listening to everybody. I've drafted and kind of inserted words and made it color marks, but essentially what I've come up with was, you know, not just a little bit tweak on how the vision was, it's just we are your trusted partner and it would be that is nurturing all children to find their greatness by providing the necessary support and educational opportunities that they need. So nothing crazy.
Put it in a cohesive.
I know.
I am impressed.
It looks like us, I'm putting it all together, we're just.
Yeah. All right. Well, I know it's a lot of just kind of brainstorming and it's really hard to get, wrap your head around all of it kind of at once, so I love that we came up with some good ideas. Like I said, what we'll do with the steering committee meeting that we come back to in two, that I go to in two weeks is we're gonna walk them through these pieces and we're gonna, I will take them some samples using some of the language and we're gonna have the steering committee give some feedback and see if they can help do some more tweaking or throw out the ones they don't really like and figure out the ones to elevate back to you as some choices or if they have just another thought on how to write some things, we'll get that feedback as well. And so when we come back to you next time, we'll have their feedback on what we did, some examples using your ideas, and then what you'll do is we'll think about, like do any of them sound like, which one sounds more like something that we would like to choose and then how do we make it stronger using some of that feedback? So this usually is a kind of a two or sometimes three step process to get these final, but I think what's great is it does kind of go back and forth and we get your thoughts. You all will be the ones who are the final say on it, but we'll help gather some ideas along the way to help feel like, for you to hear from a variety of different stakeholders about like what, what would make it resonate a little bit more from their perspective, so. All right, let's go ahead and move to the Q and A slide. Want to just take a moment to see if you have any questions about our strategic plan process, what we'll be doing over the next several months or the steering committee or just anything related to strategic planning at this time?
So you had mentioned a few minutes ago that we also, and I can start talking about portrait of a graduate. Are there some things that you could send us soon so that we have time to look at samples, get ideas, kind of brainstorm what would be important to us?
Yep.
I know we can find the state one and look at that as well.
You can find some from Utah districts that have taken the Utah portrait of a graduate and kind of simplified it for their school district. That would probably be the best. We'll probably start with the Utah portrait of a graduate, but to kind of see how other districts interpreted it would be helpful.
Okay, great.
So you're able to compile that and just send it so we don't all have to go.
Yes, I can do that.
Sure, that would be helpful.
Yeah, we've, I've already got a file of several other districts where you can see some examples. I don't have other Utah ones, so that's what I will research to also bring you those as well, but we'll put all of those together so you can just kind of scroll through and look at several. Portrait of a graduate is similar to core values in that you're gonna see the main words and then they go and kind of define them, but we're just gonna kind of focus on main words of the, of the next piece before we write definitions, so. And I will send you those things in advance. Any other questions about our process? All right, do you want to go to the next slide? So, and I think we kind of got into the feedback, but is there anything else that you, that would be helpful before we come back together in terms of continuing the work on core values, vision, and mission or portrait of a graduate or just anything about how we work together that would just be more helpful for the next meeting?
I would just like to thank Wendy for the update that she gave us. That was very helpful for me to hear what they had talked about and what they liked and didn't like because I was like, oh, it's good because I felt the same, or maybe I like this more than they did, but I appreciated that because we're not there, nor am I volunteered to be there. But it was good for me to be able to see that, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
If we could continue to make, Wendy do lots of work. I'm happy to do that.
Great. Anything else?
Well, I, I'm just excited to see what the steering committee does with what we started and I would just hope that they, that it's portrayed to them that it's important to us to get their feedback. Like I hope it changes and/or certain things, you know, rise to the top, that we are just a starting point and I value their input greatly.
And I don't want them to think that the words that we give them are keeping them in a box. Like we want their, their opinions too, like those are just what we're bringing up.
And they might come up with stuff we admit, right? Like.
Yeah, and what you'll see when we do the next one is we will have some slides with the actual, the bullet points of the feedback we got. And so usually what happens is they'll come back and say, you know what, that word kind of, this particular word really bothers us, could we sub in this word instead, which means something similar, but you'll see kind of a lot of that. And typically the boards then do use that feedback to make some revisions and what's great, what makes the steering committee feel great is when they said, you know, when they actually see some changes that were made based on their different perspectives. So that typically, it makes it kind of easy to, for you to have lots of choices on kind of what to do and you don't have to take all of their feedback, but boards typically do take a lot of it to make this a stronger document. So I'm excited to bring that back to you and to share with you what the committee did and kind of how, where we sort of landed and what were the ones that they liked best that they wanted us to move forward with. Okay, well, that concludes the presentation I have. Yeah, oh, go ahead, yes.
Totally, it's kind of related. Obviously this is the most important, but you're focused on with them with the core values and vision and mission, but I'm wondering if there's time, if they can also maybe look at some of those portrait of a graduate ideas, maybe even just the Utah ones generally. And out of all the ones in Utah, because Utah's a lot, I don't know that we want that many, what stands out to them?
Yep.
Right, which ones, if we could only pick a certain number, which ones are most important for our community in their perspective?
Yes, I can do that. We typically, yeah, with the, with the team usually do it at the second meeting or the third meeting, so I'll make sure the portrait of a graduate one, it gets on the agenda for the next one in two weeks. And typically what we do is sort of bring you back a word cloud of their ideas so you can see the ones that got sort of the most votes from people. And so you'll, that'll help you just kind of see what's really resonating with your team, so. Okay, and then, so anyway, we have that steering committee coming up in two weeks, we'll work on those things and then, I don't believe we set, did we set a date for the next work session? Oh, okay, I think we did.
November fourteenth, I believe.
Oh, great. November fourteenth, so we will be back and I'll bring you all that feedback and their ideas about portrait of a graduate on November fourteenth.
And we just didn't do the third one.
Yeah, actually, it is on my calendar, so. Okay, great, well, thank you very much, and I hope you have a lovely evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I know that we adjourned that meeting.
Motion made by.
Okay, great.
Hey, thanks, everybody, for letting me call in.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Thanks, Rebecca.
Missed you.
Have a good night.
Bye, guys.
Bye, Rebecca.
Thank you, Bonnie, for all you did, especially with the technology.
Love.
There was a lot of moving parts, city parks, but in the mind.
And I'll talk again.
I'm glad she raised it all.
Thank you, Cabinet.
Nope.
I'm not ready to get off, my kids are. All right, thank you so much.
There are a lot of good little sounds left, take your.
Uh, tomorrow, yeah, yeah. Dallas. Yeah. My first time to Utah.
Last week.
How was landing and seeing you?
I was beautiful, I did like, I tried to text one of the others.
There's no thing to get my bearings.
Actually, yeah, I got a little flat.
Okay, there's, there's the city, I can get very.
It lets you get to know, I mean, this is Florida, it's like, there's the main highway, I know where I am, so that highway, I know where I found him, now I know where he is.
All right, great.
Oh, my gosh, I'm so glad.
No, now I'm sure it's not.
I know, people resist, right? Like, it's a sign of demise, that they're not wanting.
So the last one, he was in the hot tub. He had, with the stuff that. And. Because my father is dead. So, that's why.